Now, we can.
Maybe I should let everybody in anyway.
Yeah, I hope I get on soon.
All right, I'm gonna end it all.
Don't forget to record. Got it?
Yep, got it.
Hello. Hello.
Hello.
Good deal.
Hello.
Hello.
Hola, como esta?
Everybody good?
Send an email on May 5th.
Hey, Brian.
Good evening.
Here comes Rose.
That's interesting.
All right, I came in through the link that I put on the news feed.
Thank you, Carol.
You're welcome. I don't know what the problem was with that.
I don't know, because I know we did it. That was strange.
Yeah, very strange.
Laurie texted me earlier and said when she clicked on it, it went to the DDA meeting. That made no sense.
That's weird.
But we should be fine now. There went the guy, Carl.
Well, I don't know if any of you can help me, but I had a picture on the screen and now I don't. I mean, I see you guys. My camera went off. Am I on yours?
I don't have a box for you over here, Glenn.
Okay.
Oh, now I see Glenn's iPad now.
Okay, well, is there a particular button? Maybe the more button.
There may be a video and audio icon in your lower left, depending on if you have it vertical or horizontal.
It's horizontal.
So it should be in your lower left, maybe.
Which gallery view? There we go. Huh. Yeah, I don't see anything down there.
Nothing pops up that says mute or stop video or start video?
It does say start video.
You gotta click on that then.
Oh, there we are.
Lisa, do you know if Carl has entered the meeting yet?
I've got two phone numbers. I think his is 5769.
Okay, Carl, if you unmute yourself, just so we know you're here.
Yeah, and Patricia said she is handling with her audio and video and she's logging back out and back in.
Sound check over here.
Whoever that was, we could hear you.
I think that was Doug Varney.
Okay.
Carl, are you there?
Three times. Can you hear me?
No, you were muted. We got you now.
We hear you now, Carl. All right. So we have everyone here now. At this time, we'll start the regular city council meeting for May 11th, 2020. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Councilmember Kurtswell.
More than welcome, Mr. Mayor.
All right. With that, we'll move on to the roll call this evening. It looks as if everyone is present. And we'll move on to the approval of the minutes from April 27th, 2020. Councilmember Kibble, go ahead.
I have three of them on page two, three lines up from the bottom of the page. It should read, he stated, and insert if it's after the fact. Okay. Page four. The middle of the DTE discussion. Councilman Kibble stated who delete is, it should simply say who approved the design of this. And then on page six. Let's see. The last line of my comment, the sentence should end, that volunteer spirit has been strong here. That's all I had. Thank you.
Lisa, were you able to keep up with all that? Lisa Deaton, okay. Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
I'll go ahead and move the minutes as amended.
I'll support.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion passes. Move on to the approval of the bills this evening. Councilmember Kibble.
I just want to move the bills.
A second.
Any further discussion on the bills this evening?
I have a question.
Councilmember Richards, go ahead.
I just want to make note of it. On the payment of the checks. Last month, we've issued a check for $70,000 to HRC. It was my understanding that we were supposed to be a limit on how much they could charge, they could get billed per month, okay? But I may be wrong. I'm just bringing that to your attention. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Richards. We have a motion in a second to approve the bills this evening. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All of those opposed? Motion passes? Approval of tonight's agenda? Councilmember Kennedy?
I'll make motion to approve the agenda.
I'll support.
Discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes? At this time, we will open the floor for public comment. Please remember to state your name and address and please listen for the two-minute timer. Okay, at this time, we're going to close public comment and move on to the discussion of downtown. Paul, would you like to take the lead on that?
Actually, Carol's present today. She's going to give the report for the downtown. She's been handling a lot of items relating to stabilization funds and thought it'd be a good opportunity for her to handle it.
I think that's great. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have been working on the Oakland County Stabilization Grant. Round one has already been completed. We're working on round two right now, in which we will receive an additional $133,835. It's in processing, so I can't comment on who's getting what. We are also working on a crowdfunding campaign that has a matching donation program from the Michigan, from the Main Street Oakland County for businesses impacted by COVID-19. This campaign runs through May 23rd. It's on our Facebook page and other people have shared the link for us. Donations currently stand at around 1,500. So we're doing okay. When the DDA meets this week, we'll work on putting together an application for businesses so they can apply for assistance from this crowdfunding money that's coming in. So the next DDA meeting is Thursday, May 24th. Along with Mayor Pellchat, Councilmember Dilg, and Kennedy. We are working on the Lyon Business Group COVID-19 Response and Recovery Team with Lyon Township and the Kensington Valley Chamber of Commerce. We've created a survey that's going out to the businesses and I believe Lisa posted that link today on one of our platforms. And we're going to alternate days when we're sending out the link to other platforms and be contacting local businesses to get their feedback on what they need to reopen.
Thank you, Carol. Does anyone have any questions for Carol this evening? Councilmember Dilg, go ahead.
I just wanted to say thank you for taking the lead on this and helping us out with, well, we have an absence of a DDA director. Appreciate it.
You are welcome.
With that being said, does anyone else have anything? I just was thinking earlier this week and I had mentioned it to Paul and I wanted to figure, go ahead and go out publicly with this comment, that I feel that Carol was going to be brought on full-time at the start of the next fiscal year and that if she's going to be adding some of our DDA responsibilities to her plate, that we should consider bringing Ms. Brandon on full-time before the turn of the fiscal year. So just something for all of us to think about. And with that, we'll move ahead to the fire chief report and Chief Vogel.
Thank you, Mayor. We got good news. We got the ladder truck back in service on Saturday evening and it was able to respond to the fire at Pro Pizza Saturday evening. Cost, I don't have in front of me, I think I sent it to Councilman Kennedy. It was under $3,000 anyhow and it works great, so I'm pretty happy.
Excellent.
It was a busy weekend. It feels like the town is waking up. Calls were up. We did have the small fire at Pro Pizza. I was able to work with the county and we got them open today. I was pretty proud of my team and the county. We were able to, I was able to get the fire marshal to come in, spoke to Safe Built, got the health department on board, and we got them open. I thought that was pretty important that they get open, especially during these times. We did receive some bad news that the grant that I was writing for COVID, they kind of changed the rules on us seven weeks into the game. I was very disappointed to find out that they were considering not paying for staff hours. When this all started in March, they clearly said that any extra hours of staff would be considered for the FEMA grant. Now, we, they kind of changed the rules. I reached out to the governor's office and also FEMA and they assured me that they're going to maybe reconsider, which is good, because I've been working really, really hard with other department heads trying to keep a track of our cost as a city and hopefully we get this reimbursed. I've worked really hard on keeping track. COVID calls kind of been steady. We had all our, a majority of our employees were tested today. That was interesting. Novi put on a free testing. Chief Sovik kind of headed this up. It went pretty good. I think all his department, and you'll probably speak of it, was tested and I had a majority. It was literally drive up, get poked, get your nose swabbed, and move out. We will get the results probably in about 36 hours. And finally, I've been working pretty hard also trying to ensure that when the city manager gives us the green light to go open, that we have a steady flow of PP, personal protective equipment for all employees. We've been, I still have some help tickets with the county. I'm kind of worried about masks, but I think we'll get by. Any questions, Mayor?
Anyone have anything for Chief Vogel this evening? Councilmember Kibble, and then I'm going to come over to you, Councilmember Kurtswell.
Not a question, but I really wanted to say thank you very much, Rob. You guys have been really taking care of business. The notion of the rig getting back that quickly is terrific. The idea of all the work that you've been doing trying to collate all the costs that are being incurred that were outside of the norm. Hopefully that will end up paying off in the long run, so thank you very much.
Thank you. It's been a team effort. I can't take all the credit for that. Patricia, Chief Sovik, Brienne, city manager, and you know, DPW, I've been really, hopefully it pays off. I was disappointed to hear, but I have a little bit of faith left.
Councilmember Kurtswell, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Two comments. First of all, I was glad to hear that testing has been done for some of our first responders. I have not spoken to anybody yet who has not been able to get testing, so I'm glad that some of that inaccuracies is being debunked and you got the testing, so that's good. Could you clarify what the issue was with the state fire marshal when he came into town? What that was all about?
Um, I don't want to throw. So it's a long story. I don't want to throw a lot of mud, but it came back to a complaint to City Hall from one of our business owners who was very upset the way she was treated and she thought it was one of our team members. Come to find out, it was not. It was a state employee. I filed a complaint with the governor's office. They listened. It was dealt with. I was insured that the state employees are supposed to be educating on the executive order and safe distancing and they took note of my complaint because I was not the only one to complain. We had a business owner that also complained to the state, which I found out later, and there was a couple complaints also from Lyon Township. It was addressed. I'm happy with the results. I don't think it'll happen again.
Well, I guess what I don't understand is, is why was the state fire marshal called in? Was, wasn't?
I don't, I don't think he was. The impression I got was he saw an issue that he misunderstood and tried to address it, which the state encourages. It was the tone which was the problem.
Why was he in South Lyon? How did, how did he even get his feet in South Lyon?
The impression I have is he lives here.
Was he on duty?
I think with, by the direction of the state, they were encouraged to be on the lookout for unsafe practices, to educate people that might be not following the executive order. And they also were told to give kudos to businesses that were following it. The impression I got was that this person saw what he interpreted as unsafe social distancing by a business. He pulled in, complained to the owner with a tone that bothered this person. The business owner didn't have any idea that this happened. This was just customers that just happened to take some chairs and sit down. They were not, they kind of unstacked the chairs themselves. And this, his boss assured me in the governor's office that this was not the tactic that they were supposed to take.
Why did, do you know why he did not call Chris Sovik? Why he did not allow the local law enforcement agency to handle this? Why would he, why would he overstep the South Lyon Police Department?
I, I didn't do any follow-up. I know that they were doing an investigation. I was happy to hear that they ensured me that Chief Sovik and I were in charge of making sure that our city's safe and they were there to support us. And this shall not happen again. And that was my ultimate goal is to make sure that that one of our business owners was treated the way she was and it was addressed.
Okay, well, the two of you have done a fabulous job. And this is why the state needs to get out of some of the things that they're sticking their nose into. It's because this, the local jurisdictions that know their businesses, know the temperament, know their people. I am shocked that this happened. This is actually far worse than what I thought it was.
Well, I was, I was truly promised that this was not going to happen again. And Chief Sovik and the city manager are in charge of this city.
That's, that's my understanding.
I'm confident that the matter is over and been put to bed, so.
Thank you very much. Thank you for the explanation.
Does anyone else have anything for Chief this evening?
Yes, I do.
All right, Carl, I'll tell you what. I'm going to let you go first and then we're going to go over to Councilmember Dilg. Go ahead, Carl.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief, I get questions from citizens that want to know who's the official tabulation keeper of the cases of, confirmed cases of infection. Yeah. It's, it's your statistics of illnesses.
That is not correct. I track calls that the city of South Lyon Fire Department is sent to a possible COVID call. In other words, somebody calls 911 for a medical issue and through 911 questioning, they come up as a possible COVID case. I track. And I'm doing that for FEMA billing for the grant. The county, and there's a website that I don't have in front of me and I can get to you, where they track, the county tracks, I think it's the county, Oakland County Public Health, where they track every known positive and possible COVID in the county. And there's a great website where you can put in a zip code and it will give you how many cases. Now, I tell people all the time, when you put in 48178, you're getting some of Lyon, some of Salem, and some of Green Oak. So when you see that number, don't think it's just a city. It's the whole zip code. Does that make sense, Carl?
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Get to that website, Carl.
Chief, I actually have it here. So it's, it's oakgov.com and then you can put in your zip code and it will, it will show you where you go. So again, that's oakgov.com.
And Mayor, that's a branch of Oakland County Public Health, correct?
I, it's, Chief, it had a, it had a link right there for me through the oak.gov, so I assumed it was through the county, but you may be correct.
Mayor, I think Lisa or Councilman Dilg had a question, maybe?
Oh, yes. Sorry, Councilmember Dilg, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just didn't hear you at the very end. Did you say you're having trouble getting masks?
I have, excuse me, I have lots of masks. I have a concern that when the city manager at the direction of the governor opens up the city and the water department and the DPW and the city comes alive and we have more interactions with the citizens, employees will be using more masks. I'm afraid that it might be at a rate that I can't keep up with right now. Right now, we're very healthy.
We'll get it.
But we're not seeing people at City Hall yet. We're not sending the employees out to have face-to-face contact with the citizens and I believe that that's probably going to be soon. And I just want to make sure we're ready. It's a concern that I have that we're keeping an eye on.
Okay. And do you, do you feel like you need help or do you feel like you have?
No, this is just, um, if it comes to a point where I have to spend money to buy them, I will. I'm trying to be cheap and I reach out to Oakland County EOC and they've been pretty good, but right now healthcare facilities are really eating up the masks.
Right.
So I, I, I'm not terribly concerned right now, but there could come a point where I might have to purchase some masks, which I really don't want to do, but they're available. So there is a way to resolve this.
Okay. I appreciate your forward thinking on that, so we don't get stuck. Thank you.
Yeah.
Anyone else with anything for Chief Vogel tonight? Thank you, Chief Vogel, for everything. All right, we'll move on to the police chief report and Chief Sovik.
Okay, I got a couple things for you here. Unfortunately, the Memorial Day Parade has been canceled. I know the event coordinator Dana Johnston has been just beside herself and she's very disappointed, but she thinks that doing that is going to be best for the veterans because they are exposed group. They're more vulnerable than the rest of us. But she is trying to plan something at a later date for the veterans to celebrate them and honor them, so we'll see where that comes down the road. The Lake Street Cruisin' kickoff date of May 27th has been canceled. I guess we'll just wait and kind of see what happens from here on out to talk about the June event. Yes, all 16 officers plus our administrative assistant Brienne were tested for COVID-19 this afternoon in Novi. That was put on by the Michigan Association, the Chiefs of Police in conjunction with the Wayne State University. They provided the COVID testing for all of us and for the antibodies. We should be getting our results within 24 to 36 hours, so very thankful about that. I'll be doing a couple of things. About three weeks ago, I posted a video of two individuals responsible for stealing items from various subdivisions in the city and in Lyon Township. I was requesting help identifying these pieces. Some information, but the was fruitless. Early Sunday morning about 3:00 AM, officers were asked, were alerted to two individuals checking on corridors in the Oak Creek subdivision, Pontiac Trail and Ima. Officer Jacobs, the young guy, thank goodness, he was one of the first guys to respond and gave chase on foot for approximately 200 yards before he caught one of the individuals, resisted, had to tase him. But both of these individuals were identified. Local, two local residents, 18-year-old and 15-year-old. Subsequent investigation revealed that they were responsible for many of our LFAs, larceny from autos in the, in the area over the last year. They go off from time to time and they were just, they were basically pulling on car handles and they weren't breaking into anyone that was locked or breaking glass, looking for change and money, but these kids out between 11 o'clock and 5:00 AM, no, but, so both subjects have been arrested and they'll be charged accordingly. And one more thing is, you know, we've been kind of seeing some stories about some sheriffs and some sheriff's departments not enforcing the executive order. And I had a citizen actually send me a message on Facebook, just asking me about certain things and it kind of started off a little bit slow, then I basically said, well, where is this going? And she's like, and I'm just going to read this, her question to me and my response as to how I responded to her, and I'll also put this on our Facebook page tomorrow, but she said, "I'm not trying to start trouble or anything. I'm honestly just curious where South Lyon stands in the matter. I want to support local businesses as much as possible, but also want to respect law enforcement and citizens' preferences in each area. Like I said, rather than going by hearsay or word of mouth, I'm choosing to ask the police department in the three locations I am frequently." And this is my, this is my response to her. At South Lyon PD, I give officers the discretion to handle situations the way they do best. We enforce laws and uphold the Constitution. When it comes to executive orders issued by the governor, I give them the same discretion as they have when dealing with other types of violations, crimes, et cetera. When it comes to enforcing the executive orders, we have been, we have been more about compliance. Explain the violation to make sure the violator is aware of the order that is and the action that violates the order. We take that approach first. With this pandemic, we have entered into uncharted waters. People are hurting mentally and financially. We have an opportunity to deal with people on a human level and not act as the authority and be We have an opportunity to deal with people on a human level and not act as the authority and be heavy handed. That has been our approach since the crisis began. We have not issued any citations for those violating. Any executive orders to date. We understand how difficult it has been on people, and being heavy handed, we do not believe is the best way to handle these situations. Our best outcome is bringing the incident or situation to a peaceful resolution. We're looking for the win win. People have been very good with us, we haven't had any issue. We haven't had to issue any citations or violations of the executive orders, saying that. If an individual gets out of hand after we're trying to work with that individual, and they force us into a situation where we have to take action, we will, but that hasn't have to happen yet. This isn't our first option. I hope that clarifies where we stand as a department. When we say we want to partner with our community, we mean it, and our actions reflect so. So I think, um, the committee's been very, working very well with us, and like I said, at this time. Uncharted waters, and, uh, we think that's the best approach, and like, if we have to, if we have to take action, we will. Um, but just with the situation, we just tried to, um. Uh, handle it the best we can, but they do have discretion. We do have the authority to, um, you know, arrest people or cite you for the executive orders. At this time, we haven't had to, and I'm very thankful that. We live in a community that's willing to work with us. Any questions?
Councilmember Walton, did you have something for Chief Sobek?
I do, but if I want to make sure no one has any questions in regards to the executive order before I speak.
Okay, that's fine. Does anyone else have anything for Chief Sobek? I appreciate that message, chief. Uh, council member Walton, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, chief, I worked with the chair for the, um, Memorial Day Parade. And I, I just want to read a little something, if that's okay. Um, to all the veterans of all branches, thank you for your sacrifice, thank you for your bravery and the example you set for all of us. We truly appreciate you. Thus, it's with a very heavy heart that the members of the BFW, the American Legion, and in coordination with the city of South Lion, have decided to delay the Memorial Day Parade. And subsequent ceremony in the cemetery until further notice. Uh, that is, of course, due to the executive order. However, we are asking at this time that the residents of South Lion do, do a few of the following things, maybe decorate your garden patriotic decor. Decorate your windows, your front doors. Take a drive around the neighbors and see what they have decorated with. Observe a moment of silence on Memorial Day. Uh, we're also working on a video that's going to be played on social media with all the veterans that we have lost over the last year to give them credit and to. Acknowledge them on their day instead of waiting until later. Um, so we are asking that you view the video. And discuss the history and meaning of Memorial Day with your students. Students at home, um, as you are working out the days. And doing your homeschooling. So that's all I'm asking, and that's all I wanted to say, so thank you.
Anyone else with anything for Chief Sobek? Councilmember Dill?
Nope, I wasn't reading.
Thanks a lot, chief.
You're welcome.
At this time, we will be moving on to the presentation of the water sewer rate analysis by Plant Moran. Uh, Paul, you want to go ahead and take the lead on that?
Uh, yes, uh, tonight, we have Brian Kamalair from Plant Moran to discuss our water and sewer rate analysis. This analysis is information that was provided to city council members a couple of weeks ago. Brian's going to be taking control of the screen also, I believe, and either showing our, uh, PowerPoint presentation or additional information for you. Uh, Brian, I'll turn it over to you, whether you want to handle questions during the presentation, or whether you want to have them all at the end of the presentation, it's up to you.
I'm fine taking questions throughout, that's fine.
Uh, Brian, really quickly, with that being said, then, let's go ahead and just go with the same type of format we've been doing. For those of you that I can see on video, just please raise your hand. Uh, council member Richards, if you have a question, please just try to, um, speak up in a time where we'll, we'll be able to hear you. Uh, Brian, go ahead.
All right, thank you. I'm gonna try to share my screen, I believe, uh, members of council would have this PowerPoint already printed, or at least, uh, have their own electronic copy. So let's see if I can get this. Are you able to see the, the cover? Says City of South Lion Utility Rate Model.
No, yes.
How about now?
It's coming up.
There it is.
All right, very good. Uh, well, thank you for the opportunity to speak with you. Uh, this is the second model that, uh. Myself, working for Plant Moran, has done for the city of South Lion, and, and. Well, I want to apologize right now. If you hear a dog barking, I wish I could do something about it, but, uh, th- that puppy doesn't listen to me. Uh, but as I was saying, this is the second rate model, uh, the last one was probably a good ten years ago. Uh, plus or minus a year or two in either direction. Uh. The idea is basically the same. Although we are making, uh, a recommended change, and, and we'll get into what that means, but our models are. Uh, are really just big, complicated Excel files. And the calculation of the rate. Is. At its base, it's algebra. So as long as you have all the components of the cost. Uh, and the number of units that are sold. We're able to calculate the necessary rate in order for you to generate enough cash. In order to pay your vendors, pay your people, and operate your plant and your infrastructure. As well as replacements for your plant and your infrastructure as they age and need repair and, and replacement. Uh, so this time, uh, instead of a five year like we did. Back in the day, now we're doing a. Uh, a ten year model. Um. We'll get to the calculation in a bit. Uh, but here are some, uh, the overall objectives of what we're trying to do. We want to make sure that you have enough cash to pay your bills. We want to make sure that, uh, you're charging a fair rate, and I agree, fair is a subjective term. Uh, but we do have some guidance, uh, through the legal system as to, uh, how rates could or should not be calculated. Uh, we want to make sure that we are providing enough cash to, to satisfy all of the recommendations. Uh, from your engineers. And, uh, we want to make sure that not only do we pay for bills and improvements. But we also have enough cash in the bank. We maintain enough cash throughout the process. Um, because you don't want to, to drain those coffers before you're done. You, you want to maintain a certain amount, and we'll get into. How much should you maintain?
Brian, I'm really sorry to interrupt. Um, folks, this is the first time we've done something like this, but unfortunately, with the screen being shared, I don't have all of you on my screen, so if it's okay. Um, we will wait for Brian to finish, and then we can do questions at the end, if that's all right. Thank you. Go ahead, Brian.
Hey, Dan, can you, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Well. Quite honestly, I think that anybody could pipe up and just ask their question, or ask to be able to put the question forward, because you could. You kind of get distracted by, uh, the conversation. And maybe lose sight of what you were wanting to ask.
That, that's fair, uh, council member Kibble, and, and, and I, I appreciate your feedback. That's fine, let's just all try and, uh. Let's try not get lost in talking over anybody, but yes, that's, that's fine then.
Okay, uh, so we're doing a ten year model. And, uh, by doing that, we're actually able to spread the costs of, uh, the significant improvements over a greater amount of time. And it, it's giving you the ability to, uh. Keep the rates at a lower rate than you would if you were to calculate this over five years. Because a lot of the improvements are over the first three to four years. And we're, as you'll see through the model, it is allowing you to spend down some money for a period of time before building your reserves back up. So that at the end of ten years, you'll end up in the same spot cash wise as you are today. So it's going to come full circle. You're going to spend money on, on needed improvements. Your cash balance goes down, and by the end of the model, it comes back up. Uh, we're doing this, the model on a cash needs basis. So depreciation expense is not included. Um, we are concerned about paying your, uh. Scheduled debt payments on a cash basis, so under full accrual accounting, making a debt payment is not an expense, just the interest portion is. But we're taking into account all the cash that you have to expend, all the cash that will come back in. This last bullet point is, is very important, so we're changing the methodology in which you bill. And there's a thousand different ways that you could bill. There's no one right way. But there are some ways that. You should stay away from. And there's one particular component in your current structure that we want you to get away from. Uh, the concept of the, uh, minimum usage bill. So the concept behind minimum usage bill is that there are fixed costs that regardless of how much water you use, need to be paid for. And so you're charging your residents that amount through a minimum bill. However, uh. We think we can get to that same point, and we're getting you to that same point. But through a different methodology, we're introducing the term readiness to serve charge. So what this is, is before you turn on your faucet. There are costs in being incurred. There's some, there's employees that have to work at the plant, there's the cost of the infrastructure in the plant. There's the, the person that sends out your water bill, whether you used a drop of water or a million gallons, the effort to send out that bill is the same. And so we're going to pay a portion of that cost. Before anybody turns on the fountain. If that is going to compensate. For the elimination of the minimum usage requirement. Uh, a- and the reason we'll get into this, and it's not in the slides, but there is, uh, a lawsuit called Bolt versus the City of Lansing. It's about twenty years old. And the, it, what Bolt said is that there's a three part test. That a utility rate has to pass. Uh, number one, it must serve a regulatory purpose, not just be revenue raising, which is not an issue for you. Uh, and so basically what that means is you can't raise water rates to then pay for public safety. You raise water rates to pay for the cost of water, the cost of sewage treatment. Part two of the test, user fee must be proportionate to the cost of service. So. If you're getting X amount of water, you pay for X amount of water. Not a minimum amount. And number three must be voluntary, the user must be able to limit their charge. So if I decide that I want to be stinky and not take a shower and not wash my clothes for a month. That should be okay in terms of not billing me for that water. But I have access to the water, and someone is still going to send me a bill at the end of the month. And someone is still gonna call, or gonna answer my call if I have a problem with my service. So those costs need to be paid for, and instead of paying a minimum usage fee. I'll pay that readiness to serve charge, and then decide how much water I choose to use in any given billing period. Before we move on, is, I know, this is a big change for the city. So does anyone have a question about this? Okay, here and done, and then feel free to, to jump in at any time. So these next several slides, I'm not going to go into much detail. It's to talk you through the basic math of rate setting. We'll come back to each of these slides, uh, a little bit later. So step one is to figure out what your actual costs are on a cash basis. They fall into these four buckets. So. The, the first bucket. Water treatment or water purchase, sewer treatment, or the purchase of, of sewer treatment. So really, that's, that's really the nuts and bolts of what you're doing. In the case of City of South Lion, you have your own plant for both. If you were a different community that had to buy water wholesale, that cost also goes into this bucket. Second bucket is the capital outlay. So this is big ticket purchases that you have to invest in the infrastructure, in the plants. So water line replacement, water main replacement, slip lining in the sewers, or anything having to do with the plant. Big dollars that you only do, maybe it's once every ten years, maybe once every twenty years. But big dollars that, that have to, uh, be expended every now and then. Debt service on your existing bonds, and you only have a couple of those, and one of them. Will expire in the next few years. And then internal operations, I notice I have a typo here. It's internal operations. So that is the cost of the people working at City Hall. Or the people working in the plant. Uh, the cost of insurance, the cost of billing, it's, it's what you're doing to run the system. So you put all of those costs together into the total cost pool. Step two, we take that, that, uh, call. And from that number, we subtract miscellaneous revenues and flat. The flat fee i- is, uh, the readiness to serve. Other miscellaneous revenues could be interest earnings, or tap in fees, or penalties and interest. And folks that are late and paying their bills. So you subtract out those revenues from the cost pool. And that gives you the amount that you have to recover through the variable rate. Step three, we take that variable rate, or excuse me, the cost to be recovered through the variable rate and divide it by the number of units sold. So if we were operating in a vacuum in one year. This is where we would be done. We would have done this simple algebra and said, this is the rate we're going to charge everybody. The problem with this, doing it in a one year vacuum, is going back to those capital costs. If you have big dollar capital costs this year, and you're charging a rate to pay for those big dollar capital costs. Your rate for this year is going to spike. And then next year, after those big dollar purchases are done, we do the calculation again, and now the cost, uh, drops through the floor. That would cause a tremendous amount of chaos in the city. People would be very upset when you raise the rates. And then you drop them, they'd be happy, but the very next year, you gotta raise them again, and we start the cycle all over again. So what we do is in the next step. Step four. Is we spread the increase out over time. Let's look at everything over, in this case, a ten year horizon. That way, we can smooth the rates out. And so in any one year, there's going to be, there might, and this should be updated every year, but for our intents right now, looking out ten years. As far as we're concerned, there is a way to spend the money over the next couple of years in capital. And recoup it over ten years with a steady. Rate increase. We'll get to what that, what that could be, because you still have some options. But it's to make it steady. We don't want our rates to go up and down. We don't want our rates to skyrocket one year, and then we freeze them for the next five. We want to train everyone to accept an annual rate increase. And I say train, and this is coming from, uh, other experiences with other, other communities. If you set your rates and increase your rates every single year. At the same time of year, as part of a defined and clearly explained process. People will come to accept it. Every other bill in our life goes up. But if you raise rates every year, and I see this. In every community I work with. People come to accept a three percent, a four percent, a six percent raise. If it's the same every year, and it's explained to them, this is what we're paying for. When there's a mystery around it, that's when people get upset. So I, I mentioned that we want to maintain an amount of money in the bank. So we refer to that as working capital. It's not just cash. It's cash and other assets minus some liabilities. Uh, it, it, it's almost cash, so if it, if it makes it easier to understand, we can just call it cash. But we want to have four buckets. Bucket number one is the operating reserve. You pay your bills faster than your customers pay you. And therefore, you need to have enough money in the bank to pay for your vendors while you're waiting for your customers to pay you. You run a quarterly billing cycle. So our suggestion is, whatever it is, if it's a month, make it two months. If it's two months, make it three, in your case, it's three, let's make it four. So we're gonna have a hundred and twenty days of working capital in the bank in order to fund those, uh, payments. The second bucket is the next year's worth debt service. So when you make a debt payment, it's pretty significant, it's large, and it empties this bucket. So now, over the course of the year, we need to refill that bucket so we can make the next payment. In fact, the bucket empties twice a year because you make a principal and interest payment one time a year. And then there's a second interest payment six months later. So this bucket constantly has to be refilled. Uh. The model calculates, as of the end of a fiscal year, you have filled the bucket and you're ready for the next year. Uh, bucket three is the Emergency Capital Replacement Fund. I call that the oops, something broke fund. Uh, bucket three is the emergency capital replacement fund. I call that the oops, something broke fund. Things break. Water mains break in the winter. Something at the plants will break. And you have to have enough money on hand to make that replacement, to make that repair. Because you don't have time to go borrow that money. So you gotta make sure you have it. And for uh, the way we calculate this is uh, because you have your own plants. And the immediate emergency needs would be more significant than if you just had pipes running under the city. It's five percent of the net book value of your capital assets. Number four, the planned capital replacement fund. So we know things break. We know things wear out. We know that we have a plant that every twenty years needs a, a, a great refurbishment. So we're going to keep the, building this planned capital replacement. And use it when we have a big uh, replacement to do. And then refill that bucket. So uh, you've been saving money for years, a portion of your tap fees. The, the money when someone wants to join your system, a new housing development, a new business. A new building goes up, they need to get access to water and sewer, they pay a tap-in fee. And you have a formula that you've been using as long as I've been working with you and, and I'm sure quite a bit longer. Uh, whereby a portion of that tap-in fee goes off into a, a side account and you're saving it. So there's several million dollars in that planned capital replacement. We're going to draw on that during the course of the next ten years and we're going to refill that bucket over the course of the next ten years. Like I mentioned before, at the end of ten years, financially, you'll be in the same point, you're at the same point as you are today. So back to the details a little bit. Step one, we have to consider your internal operations. Uh, there are no substantial changes to the internal operations or costs. Just inflationary increases because things do cost more. Cost of people and insurance, the cost of materials or chemicals, the cost of utilities, that goes up. And so we have a, a minor uh, two-point something percent inflationary increase. Year over year on those costs. Debt service, we're not planning on any new debt in the next ten years. Even though you're doing a substantial amount of capital. We're going to be able to pay for that capital using that emergency reserve and the uh, planned capital reserve. And raising rates year after year. And so your cash will go down and then it'll come back up. Uh, but by doing it this way, you are saving yourself hundreds of thousands of dollars in interest. That you get to keep inside the city instead of paying the investors in bonds that you would have to float. Uh, the two thousand and three wastewater uh, loan, uh, that was the uh, the bond that was used to. Uh, build the existing plant, that's going to be paid off in twenty twenty-six. And then the twenty thirteen water loan will be paid off in twenty thirty-four. But no other debt i- is being uh, taken out i- in the next ten years related to water and sewer. Other parts of the cost pool, the capital outlay, i- it's substantial, seven point six million for water, three point six million for wastewater. Uh, so there's a written report you haven't seen yet. Uh, it's in draft form because we are waiting uh, for some direction as to which way to finish the report. We'll get to what, what that decision is. Uh, but the list of capital is, is going to be included in that. Uh, year by year, I, I can, I've got it off here to the side. I can uh, read a couple of those things. So related to water. Replacement of a steel storage tank, storage tank repairs, water line for well number seven, generator. Pipe gallery rehabilitation, uh, dehumidification, security. And some other uh, miscellaneous things. Related to sewer, sludge handling process, a belt filter press. Sludge pumps, generator, aeration basin rehabilitation, security, lift station refurbishment. Roof at treatment plant, parking lot resurfacing, open cut repairs and other miscellaneous improvements. Altogether, uh, that's the seven point six and the three point six million here. That is the primary cause of the necessary rate increase. Because you saw debt services staying the same and your internal operations are only going up by the rate of inflation. So the readiness to serve charge, so this is replacing your minimum uh, usage. The, this and the uh, six dollar per quarter meter charge that has been six dollars per quarter. For as long as I can remember, and, and I asked a couple of folks while we were building the model, they don't remember it going up to six. So perhaps it's been six forever. Uh, but it's uh, six dollars. If it's been that way for twenty years, it is time to go up. Uh, the, the, and it's six dollars for everybody regardless of meter size. A more current or modern way of charging a readiness to serve charge is still done on a per meter basis. But instead of it being the same for every size meter, it's graduated. Meaning the smaller meter pays a smaller charge than a bigger meter. The reason being is you're paying for access to the system. Because there's costs for maintaining the system. And if you're going to draw more water out of the system, you should pay a larger percentage of those overall fixed costs. So we follow the guidance from the American Water and Wastewater Association. And they have a table that if you're a one-inch meter, you pay so much. If you're a two-inch meter, it's not two times the size of a one-inch. And if you wanted to get uh, into the complications of the math, it's also not four times the size of the meter. Uh, it's more like three and a half. And I'm sure that there's a, a higher level of mathematics behind that, but I'm not privy to that. But we follow the A W W A. Now the question is, how much of your internal operational costs will be recouped through the RTS? It's somewhere between zero and a hundred percent. It really, this is where I, I'm, one of the first slides, I said philosophy. Cause really, all of us could decide on a different number is right or fair or feels better. There isn't a right answer here. It could be zero. It could be one hundred or anywhere in between. For the purposes of doing the model, we picked two points. Ten percent and twenty-five percent. And this is ten and twenty-five percent of your internal operational costs. Why that number? Honestly, I picked twenty-five out of thin air. Because, and then on the second one, I thought that once we, we'll get into a little bit, we ran through scenarios. How does this affect actual customers? And the higher the fixed charge, the greater the impact on the low-end user. So we don't want to hurt the low-end user. We want everyone to pay a fair amount, but remember fair is subjective. So at first I picked twenty-five and we ran through a bunch of actual customers of your system. To see what it did to the rates. And I didn't quite love it. So then I looked at a fifty percent and it just got worse. So then I went the other way and it went down to ten percent. And ten percent, as you'll see, there's, there's a certain percentage of your population will be helped by doing that. And I'll leave it up to you, the council, whether you want ten or twenty-five, and then we can finish the model and finish the report that goes along with it. Uh, so actually the calculating of the variable rate, we need the units sold. So these are the units of water and sewer that you've built out since twenty fifteen. So you can see that there is a, there is a trend, but it seems to level off. So it was increasing from twenty fifteen through twenty seventeen. In the last three completed fiscal years, it's about the same. So you are, are now almost entirely built out. We know there is still some development to be had. There are still more people to tap in, more customers. Uh, but as far as usage goes, the last three years have been, been relatively flat in terms of water. So we're assuming that sales will be consistent with the next two, with the, the two-year average. Uh, and then the impact of future uh, customers is negligible. So we're not including any growth factor to that number. We're picking one number. And just assuming that that's what you're going to sell every year for the next ten years. Uh, sewer is a percentage of water and you have a unique uh, system. Uh, when it comes to your quarterly sewer bills. And for the other nine months of the year, you bill the exact same number of units. And the assumption is whatever anyone turns on their water, it ends up in the sewer system. But summer's different because people water their lawn and wash their car and fill their pool and kids play in the sprinklers. So not all of that water ends up in your sanitary sewer. So your methodology is to say, we'll just take the average of the other quarters and bill that average for the summer. So that uh, if people are using a higher rate of water, they're just paying for the water side of it. They're not paying on the sewer. And we've kept that methodology. So step four is spreading it out over the ten years, trying to get a level amount. And we want the beginning working capital to equal the ending working capital. So water has two point six million, sewer has six point two. At the end of ten years, you'll have the exact same amount. However, if we went back a couple of slides, you saw that water needs more capital than sewer. But water is starting with less cash than sewer. So what we're going to do or what we're proposing and running it through the model is water is going to borrow from sewer. And it will then pay it back. Now you only have one water and sewer fund. So it's not like money is actually going from one place to another. It's all in the same fund. It's just how we account for it. But conceptually, your water operations have generated less of a surplus than sewer has. And that difference is predominantly from the uh, the tap-ins. The money you've been setting aside for, forever as far as I know. So water's going to, you know, that's why I have it in parentheses here, quote unquote, borrow. And then repay it over the ten years. And at the end, water still has two point six, sewer still has six point two. This is an excerpt from the model. It's a little bit busy, but this is, this is the water side of it. We're starting with two point six in the upper left corner. We're finishing with two point six in the bottom right corner. And you read this from left to right, from top to bottom and back up again. So how much money we have, how much we spend and how much we take in from our customers. And then compare it to a target. So at the end of twenty twenty-one, and this is actually, uh, I should have mentioned this earlier. In fiscal twenty, you're doing uh, over a million dollars of capital. But we weren't sure how much cash you were going to end up at the end of fiscal twenty. So we're operating under the assumption that uh, we're starting with the number you had from nineteen. And we're moving the twenty capital into twenty twenty-one. So by the end of twenty-one, and as far as the model's concerned, it looks the same. Whether we had ta- we, we kind of took a shortcut to get to the end instead of showing uh, those two steps. But as you can see from water, water is negative as it's borrowing from sewer. And then come year seven of the model, water's back in the black again. And finishes year ten at the same two point six. Sewer does the same thing. It starts with six point two million. And that starts to, to go down as it lends money uh, to water. And then it comes back up again. You finish at the same six point two. So this just illustrates the same thing, combined eight point eight million at the beginning, combined eight point eight million at the end. Doing this will save you several hundreds of thousands of dollars. So you, you're financing yourself. And the only way that you were able to do this is because you had ample cash reserves that were built up over the last twenty-plus years. Uh, from not spending the uh, uh, the tap-in fees, the, that, that uh, replacement reserve that you've been building up. So before you see the actual numbers, year one, the change is more severe. Because of the implementation of the RTS and the elimination of the minimum usage. Now, it is very possible that you have both customers that will see an increase to their fee. And those that see a decrease to their fee. From year two and forward, everyone gets treated the same. Year one, we're just resetting the table. So we're doing this change in philosophy. We're doing this change in how people get billed. Uh, customers that were paying a minimum fee won't be anymore. If you don't use any water, you won't pay for any water, but you will pay the readiness to serve. Going forward, everyone gets treated the same. And so the, the increases in years two through ten. Uh, will look, depending on how much water you use, because it's now a percentage of your total bill. Depending on how much water you use, you're still within one percent of each other. So let me explain this for a little bit. So um, the current cost is two dollars and forty-six cents per unit. For water, four dollars and fifty-two cents a unit for sewer, six dollars a quarter for the current meter charge. But the current minimum bill is using seven point two uh, units. So the minimum bill, whether you use any water or, or none. Is the seventeen bucks plus the minimum charge for sewer of thirty-two plus the six. So you can imagine that by getting rid of that minimum charge, I'm sorry, go back. By getting rid of that minimum charge, there would be some people theoretically that should see a decrease in their bill. Now here is your, your options. Now I could have made literally an infinite number of these calculations. By playing with the readiness to serve, moving it up, moving it down. Uh, including more than just your internal operations. We could have put capital in here. We could have put debt service in here. Um, but we chose not to because then it makes that readiness to serve charge too large. And it would really hurt the lower-end users. So at a ten percent recoupment of your internal uh, operational cost through the readiness to serve charge. The uh, the per unit charge for water goes up to two dollars and seventy cents. In option two, if the readiness to serve charge goes up even more because we're recouping twenty-five percent. The water charge goes up to two dollars and sixty-seven cents. Sewer goes up to four seventy-four or only to four sixty-two. The RTS, the readiness to serve, is graduated based on meter size. We're treating three-quarter inch meters, the same as one-inch meters, because those are all residential units. When you get out into uh, uh, commercial buildings or um, uh, multifamily homes. You might be on a one and a half or a two-inch meter. But as the meter gets bigger, the quarterly charge gets bigger. And you can see that the difference between ten percent and twenty-five percent is uh, you know. Seventy dollars uh, for the four-inch meter, seventy dollars per quarter. On the sewer side, it's the same uh, same jumps percentage-wise. So you might be looking at the larger uh, sized meters and say, well, that's, that's pretty significant. And it is, uh, but you're paying for capacity. Uh, where previously, everyone was treated the same. You know, a, a car wash, a high uh, an industrial bill, uh, building that uses a ton of water. And is using a ton of capacity. They were paying the same amount of, of a fixed bill as the little old lady down the street that's using two units of water per quarter. And, and that doesn't really seem equitable. So we did four example customers. So residential low volume, this is, this is your little old lady down the street. Maybe it's a, a couple. But they, under the current system, would be paying fifty-six dollars per quarter. With option one, being the uh, ten percent readiness to serve, their bill actually goes down. In year one. In year two, it's going to go up by six percent on water, or excuse me, six percent in total. Under option two. Under option two, with the 25% recoupment on the RTS, they get a 16% increase in year one, but only 4% thereafter. And remember thereafter is nine straight years. So you're tearing the Band-Aid off in year one and then everything levels out in years two through 10. This is the only example, and it's going to be the low-end users. This is the only example where someone pays less. Because overall, we need more cash into the system to pay for those $11 million of capital improvements. Customer two, residential, high volume. So this is a family of four. I've got two kids that if I don't yell at them, take a half an hour shower and totally drain my hot water tank. So this is going to be my family. In year one, under the 10% RTS, my bill would go up 19%. But every year thereafter, years two through 10, it's only 6%. Option two, with the 25% RTS, my bill goes up 28%. But years two through 10, it only goes up 4%, 4% every year. So that first year is a little bit painful. I see a couple of folks gulping as they see that. But it's tearing off the Band-Aid and allowing you to finance several hundreds of thousands of dollars that otherwise you would have to raise rates to pay for that, too. Example three is a two-inch metered customer, so they're paying the higher readiness to serve charge. And this is, it's pretty high volume. You could probably guess the handful of customers that you would have in the city that would be a very high-volume water user. This would be one of them. First year, they only pay a 7% increase or only incur a 7% increase. But because they're a high-volume user, they're, and they're using a lot of water, their bill is going to go up 7% every year thereafter. And just to compare that again, the family of four pays 6% every year thereafter, 6% for the little old lady down the street. So this is another commercial customer, also on a two-inch meter. So they're paying the same readiness to serve as example customer number three, but they don't use quite as much water. Because they're not using quite as much water, the percent increase is higher in year one than it is for customer number three. But every year thereafter, it's the same percent. Because every year thereafter, everyone's getting treated the same. I should mention that the readiness to serve charge goes up every year, too. It goes up by the rate of inflation, which is just your internal cost. So it's approximately 2% to 3%. So as that one goes up, the commodity charge goes up more, which is what's driving these future year increases being more than inflation. So the next steps, the city has to make a decision. You've got to decide whether you're okay with the 10% or the 25% readiness to serve. Or a third option is, Brian, go back to the drawing board, we want to see 50% or we want to see 18%. I'd prefer you not do that. I'd prefer just picking one of these two options. But if you want more, I can do more. Then whichever you pick that number, we finalize the model, we finalize our written report. My standards department has to make sure I did my job right. And then we'll publish your report and deliver not only a written version, but also we give you the model. So you'll get the Excel file. You can update it every year, and you should. Because it should be a part of your budget process every year. Because things are going to change. So it's not set it and forget it in year one. It's something that you need to revisit every year going forward. And add one more year to the model. Constantly look 10 years out. We can help you with it if you like, or it's yours. You can do with it what you like. The model increase should be included in the fiscal 21 budget. And whenever it's appropriate, council would approve that rate. Any questions?
Yeah, I'd like to ask something.
I'm going to take down my screen so the mayor can see everybody.
Yep, and Brian, that'll help me organize it. Thank you.
Trying my best here. Is that working at all?
Lisa, do you have to take control of the screen away from Brian possibly? Lisa Deaton?
You're muted, hon.
No, I shouldn't have to.
Could you let me know where I could go to hit the button?
I can withdraw co-host, but I don't know if that'll do it or not. I can try it.
Brian, if you, did you go down to the very bottom of your screen so that?
It's not, it's not there right now.
Did you click on the share screen button?
I don't have that on my screen presently.
Oh. Okay, well, let me see if I can stop it. No, I can't.
I can see all of you now, but I am having trouble.
To continue.
Sorry about this, folks.
Yeah, I'm sorry. It doesn't seem like I can remove it.
Hey, Brian?
Yes.
Do you see the participants over to the right of your screen in like a column?
I do not. I've got everyone on my main screen.
Okay. Do you have a thing at the top where you can change the grid view to different?
I'm just going to quit and then I'll call back in in one second.
That's unfortunate. I ended up figuring out a way to do that, Brian, if you're still there, but it's all right. There is a, there's a drag and drop where that column is, and Lisa, maybe you knew that, but hey, we learned for next time, right?
No, I did not know that. Where was that at?
It was on the, on the right hand of your screen where you could see everyone in a column. You could click on that and then drag it across. And maybe you could even do that. You could even do that when they're sharing the screen, so then I can see everybody going forward.
Okay, we can try that.
Thank you for your patience. Technology's fun, isn't it?
All right, Councilmember Kivell, you were up first there. Go ahead.
I was interested to find out the annual review. So is this the opportunity in the event that some capital malady had come forward that you would have a sweeping change in, in the way that the rate would be constructed?
See, if there was an unexpected big dollar improvement that needed to happen.
That's correct.
Yeah, that would need to be incorporated into the next year's version of the model. And depending on the severity of that improvement, it would influence your rates going forward.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Does anyone else have anything for Brian? I thought, Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
So Brian, just to be sure I understand this, the difference between the two models, the 10 and the 25, you know, the 10 has a little bit of a lower initial shock, but you know, a little bit higher ongoing as opposed to the, the second example, which is a little bit higher initial shock and then it is probably a little bit lower ongoing. But either one of those models will get us to where we need to go 10 years down the road, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so it's just a question of how big a shock the residents would be able to endure. I mean, the costs are there. We've got the items that need to be repaired and they're not going to get any cheaper over the course of time. They're not going to go away magically and all the rest of it. So I mean, we still got to hit that target within 10 years, one way or another.
Correct.
Thank you.
Councilmember Kurt Swell, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple of questions. Brian, first of all, what I want to say is you were absolutely brilliant up in Frankhamouth. You were the speaker that everybody was waiting for. So it was a fabulous, fabulous seminar that you provided. And, you know, a lot of us were talking afterwards and it gave us a good opportunity to sort of network. One of the things that I wanted to ask you sort of comes out of that seminar, and that deals with the borrowing. You're talking about borrowing from sewer for water, water pays back. How do you document that transaction? Is that a formal documentation where you document the file, document, or do a promissory note or something? Or is this just a transfer of funds? How?
It's not even that. It's, it's conceptually sewer has more money to start than water. But you don't have a separate sewer bank account versus water bank account. It's all in the same bank. It's all in the same general ledger. It's all in the same fund, Fund 592. So it's just conceptually, the operations of sewer currently have more money than the operations of water.
Okay.
It's really just conceptual. It's not moving money from one spot to another.
Okay. And then I do want to go back to the issue of emergencies. I mean, what would you do? I mean, what are the options if the city had to raise, you know, in the middle of a rate increase? Let's say it's, you know, we approve the rates now and six months from now we find out we have this emergency and we don't have the money because we're, you know, how, what are our options for funding that emergency?
Well, I'm going to, so I know you can't see it right now, but I'm going to scroll up a couple of slides. So I can see the one where we track the cash throughout. So at the lowest point of the 10 years, you'd still have $2.5 million in the bank. So unless, if it was more than $2.5 million that you had to deal with, if it was more than that, then you'd have to find, you could borrow from general fund or one of your other funds if it was going to be short-term until such time as you were able to issue bonds. But a catastrophe that you would have to cut a check for more than $2.5 million is, the percentage of that is very, very low.
Okay. Now, if we did come to that scenario where we had to borrow from the general fund, would that be a transaction that would have to be documented?
If it was going to be long-term, yes, because you would want to pay general fund an interest rate.
An interest rate.
But if it's three months until you can issue bonds, it's not significant enough to do that.
Okay. I want to go back to your discussion of the tap-in fees. It clearly appears from your discussion that the policy that the city has had in the past regarding tap-in fees and how much was going to be apportioned into that replacement reserve was actually a pretty good decision. Because it obviously is serving us well now, because there's, that's where there's some money in that replacement reserve. Paul, are we going to, I asked you this prior and you didn't seem to think that there was any need to, to look at that reserve policy, that tap-in policy, the last time we spoke on this. Have you changed your mind or?
I haven't. I think, you know, having the funds available within the fund to be able to use for improvements to the system, it's not necessarily to designate that you have to use it for infrastructure based upon, you know, what's being analyzed here. I think that even, that even further shows that.
I would disagree just a little bit with that because I look at these tap-in fees as an income stream. And as a consumer, I would want to know that that income stream of tap-in fees is being protected. So how does it get protected? It gets protected because there's a policy in place that says X amount of the tap-in fee shall be used for blah, blah, blah. So I look at it more as a preservation of an asset. That's how I'm looking at it.
But based upon the money that we're going to be spending over the next 10 years, whether you decide to use the tap-in fees or the additional funds that are being raised based upon the change in rates, whatever you use first or whatever you use second, the bottom line is still going to be the same amount at the end. You're still going to have that same fund balance at the end, whether you decide to use the tap-in fees first or the other money that you raise.
Okay, I would just feel more, because I tend to be fiscally conservative. So for me, I feel a little bit better if there's more of a protection of that income stream. But that's, and Brian, when you were talking about the savings that this would provide savings, I assume the savings you're talking about is that we don't have to go out into the market and do any debt financing, so our savings is really on the debt instrument.
Correct. Interest expense you're not paying.
Yeah, that we're not going to be paying. What other cities, you mentioned during the seminar that there were other cities that were using this model and we're very pleased with it.
Oh, we've done. We have not done one for Belleville. I've done this in Wayne, Inkster, Westland, Garden City. I do five or six a year Clinton Township.
How long have they been on this program?
Well, actually, you know, the example that I like to use when I talk about you know, conditioning folks to expect certain things. The example I'm actually using is here on Township, south of the airport. So we've been doing this for them on an annual basis for probably 20-plus years. I did it for 10 of those, those years. And every year we would finish the audit, move right into the water rate model. And then when we came to the township board to present the audit, we would also present the rate model at the same time. And then the board would quickly turn around and adopt whatever the model said. And after doing it for so many years and the, the, the system of raise the rate, save some money, do an improvement, and then fill that bucket back up, the rate increases got down to, you know, 3, 3.5% every year. And it would change as we get to another year and roll the model out one more year. But it was always a 7-0 vote, still is, to the best of my knowledge. And the residents just accepted it. It wasn't a contentious issue. Because it's the end of the fiscal year, there's going to be a rate increase. And every year it's approximately the same, so it's just part of the way of life.
Well, what I, what I like about what you're proposing, and I think this came out in the seminar, is that I think this model sort of forces the municipality to plan and to budget and to think about what they're doing. And I can't tell you when the last time was that the city, you know, I think we talked about this, five years ago, whatever. And I think one of the cities that knew about this said, this plan forces you to sit down every year and analyze exactly where you're at, rather than just having your governing body approve our utility rate increase and then walk away for four or five years and not look at it, not see how it's doing, doing nothing. So I like the fact that it forces us to sit down and plan. And I did want to go to the treatment bond. And I do notice that under the program, Brian, that you're proposing, we would be saving, well, just in this year alone, $140,000 in interest. And it looks like last year we paid $163,000, you know, in interest on, on the bond. So there is a substantial savings there. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Councilmember Dill, did you have something?
I do.
Go ahead.
Mayor, I just wanted to, I wanted to look at this. So is there an advantage to doing the 25%? If it's all the same over time, I guess I'm looking at it maybe as a resident. Why do we want to shock people at the beginning and then let it be smaller? Why wouldn't you want to do it incrementally? What, you know, I just, I can't figure out why you'd want to do option two.
Well, the, the shock is coming from the philosophy change, moving to the readiness to serve charge. The actual rate increase is the same every year, but it's the, the difference is coming in the, in the RTS, how much of that cost we're going to recoup in a fixed way. So it, it's not that the, the actual variable rate goes up the exact same amount every year for 10 years. It's just in this philosophy. Now, you have winners and losers. So the number that you need is the same. Over 10 years, you get the exact same dollars amount in. But the question is, is by recouping that RTS at a different rate, a low-end user is impacted differently. That's why on page, page 23, if you still, if you have the, have it in front of you, the only user, or type of user, that benefits is this very, very low-end user, because they're no longer paying a minimum bill of 7.2 units on every bill. But they only benefit if the switch from minimum charge to RTS is less impactful. So by making the RTS less impactful, you are then shifting dollars from one set of customers to another. That's why I say there's a million different variations that, and you can see, so one, option one is 10%, option two is, is 25, or vice versa. Option two is 25. So the difference is either a decrease of 18% or an increase in 16%. So if we picked 15%, partially between 10 and 25, maybe it's a 10% decrease in year one for this customer. If we go to 20%, then maybe it's a 2% or 3% decrease in year one. But if they're paying less, someone else is paying more. And so you're just shifting that cost further up the ladder with different class of customers, based on the volume of water that they use.
Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
And Brian, looking at your, your charts there, we'll take, we'll take that example you were just describing, you know, the low-volume customer. These are, let's just take a look at it. These are the, in, in most likelihood, these are going to be the seniors, one or two-person residences in the over 55 community. And then that's going to be offset, the other people that are going to be using more are going to be paying more. These are the family of four, basically your family, as you described, that are going to incur that 19% increase in that first year, right? And that's going to help offset the decrease for the, the low-volume users, at least in year one.
Mm-hmm. Correct.
Okay.
Councilmember Kurtzwell, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have one more question, Brian. Brian, Bolt versus Lansing, have, has any of your communities that have adopted this program, have they been targeted with a lawsuit?
No community that I have worked with doing a model has then later been sued. I have worked with communities and built models after they've been sued, in order to justify why they charge what they charge.
I, I think that's the real key fact, because there were communities there at the seminar that had been sued because of their formula that they were using. And I kind of wanted to get that out, too, is that sort of looking for a rate structure that sort of, I'm not going to say completely, you know, protects us, but at least the risk of litigation is far less with, with this new model. So I wanted to at least get that out.
But.
Councilmember Richards, did you have something?
Well, I can just say that if I've been following along ages, and following what Brian's saying, and, but I have to admit, I'm at a disadvantage here, you know, because I don't have the big screen to keep following it with. I, I just have my paperwork here in front of me, and I keep jumping around on it to try to keep up on it, you know? But at some point in time, I'd like to see a replay for myself in the future at, on a big screen somewhere, if that's possible. Thank you.
We'll see what we can do about that, Councilmember Richards. Does anyone else have anything for Brian on the presentation this evening?
I think, Mr. Mr. Mayor, if I may-
Go ahead, Paul.
In moving forward with this, you know, the decision really is, is do you want the larger increase upfront, on average, and then smaller increases spread out through the next 10 years, or maybe a more palatable increase, something a little bit less the first year, but then higher increases in future years? And that's something perhaps that council can think about after this presentation, maybe even formulate some other questions that we can perhaps ask Brian, or we can discuss amongst ourselves. And that's one part of this. The other part is, is moving forward with this and accepting this that's been put together, is when to institute something like this. The bills that come out, I mean, right now, we're in a March, April, May bill that won't come out until July. And then you have a June, July, August bill that comes out, I believe it's October. So the way we've kind of budgeted things and discussed how we're going to move this in for water and sewer, and within your budget now, is that, that we wouldn't necessarily be adopting this immediately, but it would be effect perhaps in the second quarter, or the second billing in the 2021 budget. So it allows us, or affords us, the time to be able to look at this, because we would need to move forward fairly quickly on this. So it does in fact apply to the June, July, August bill, which would be starting, you know, with, within the next 30 days. But council, you know, you can decide how you want to move forward with that, but I just wanted to bring that up for discussion.
We'll go to Councilmember Dill, and then Councilmember Kurtzwell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Paul, I just had a question. Is there, I assume there would be, but I, there's going to be some kind of communication plan on how to tell people what is happening with this?
Yes, because, you know, getting this out to the public and start to talk about all the infrastructure improvements that are going to be moving forward, and HRC, and we're going to be coming forward in, in the near future to discuss some of those plans that we're talking about installing the new tank. And that is a good opportunity where the public actually sees a lot of those things, taking, really understand, instead of just saying, well, in the future, we're going to be buying things, or we're going to be spending money on things. And they start to see something like that being constructed, obviously that they can see that they're worth their dollars, they're going to go to work. And the public education campaign comes into, you know, why are we moving forward, how, how and why we're moving forward with this, starting with a fund balance, and ending with a fund balance, to start all over again for more infrastructure improvements in the future, so we can actually save the residents money, which was discussed earlier, by not borrowing money. If you're borrowing the $1 million, you know, for 10 or 15, 20 years, you're going to be spending $1.4 million. And we don't want to do that. We want to use the funds that we have available to make the infrastructure improvements.
So you would be thinking about some kind of public forum, or some kind of written communication, or?
And, and I think it's even more prevalent now to do something like that, due to the fact of, you know, potential things that are happening within the economy, and letting that get out there and discussed, because no one wants to see an increase. You know, they understand about what we have to do, and I think trying to convey that, but giving us the opportunity to do that, and start to get out there, and then implementing this, and making the recommendation on the rates.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Kurtzwell, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just sort of want to caution everybody on, on going too gung-ho at the 25%. I mean, you know, you can do what you want, but we don't have any economic models, I don't think anybody does, including Larry Kudlow, on how this economy is going to shake out. I mean, we clearly are in very, very novel territory. And there's a lot of risk out there. There's phenomenal risk. And quite frankly, I'm more worried about the economy than I am about catching COVID-19. This is pretty serious stuff. I think the jobs report coming out next month are going to be numbers that are going to, are going to be shocking, I mean, stunning. And I just caution people, there will be individuals that you will be passing this rate off to that will not have a job. And they probably won't have a job for a period of time. So I think we need to take that into consideration. These are, these are not good times. I, I mean, I'm just telling you, I mean, I, I'm looking at this stuff 19 hours a day. It's, the, the economic data is, is tough to swallow. So just be careful. Be careful how much you pass along to the consumer.
Well, I think that's going to be top of mind of all of us in going through this. I mean, but I think that's a good reminder, Councilmember Kurtzwell. Councilmember Kibble, did you have something?
Yeah, that being said, though, we still have to be responsible and make the, the decisions that move this community forward, so that we're protected for the long term. So there's always going to end up being obstacles. Some people will have better circumstances, some less, less attractive, and that's kind of the nature of life. So, but we, we have as a general consensus in our community, the need to end up making, making our system as robust and, and pertinent to long-term use for our residents, so, and businesses, for that matter. So we, we just need to actually act responsibly and come up to the best idea that solves our problem. I did want to ask Brian, the, is the, is there a front load, like, one of these options creating cash quicker than the other, so that, you know, we can end up not having to worry about, you know, you had suggested it was, what, $2.5 million or $2.1 million at the low point, to, to move that, that back on the timeline?
So both, both of these options generate the same amount of money each year. It's just a question of who's paying it, which customers, and in which, which, whether it's a fixed charge, or it's the commodity charge. But the gross dollars that come in are exactly the same.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I mean, as, as a minimum, and to, you know, Councilmember Kibble's point, and also Councilmember Kurtzwell's, the, the only option that really provides some potential relief to some of the residents is the, the option with the 10%. I mean, there will be people who will get a lower rate for the first year. So looking at the economy, if it takes the economy that long to regain its footing and come back, some of those people will be in a, in a position to better endure that. Otherwise, the, the 25% is pretty much, everybody's going to take a pretty good, pretty good hit right off the bat.
Councilmember Kibble, go ahead.
I, I'm not sold that that's necessarily so, Steve, in that I think that the, the group that you're making the allusion to is, they're on fixed incomes primarily anyway. So, I mean, don't you, don't you take that to be the case?
Well, I mean, there's the low-volume users. They could be on fixed incomes, or they could just be, you know, doing part-time work or whatever. I don't know who they are, Glenn.
I'm going to guess I'm one of them.
I was assuming that you're, you're speaking to the Colonial Acres folks primarily.
I mean, it could be people in that, in that community, but it could be all other people. It could be, you know, Councilmember Dill. It could be my wife and, and myself. I mean, there are other two, two individual families that probably fall into that category that may or may not be on fixed income. You, and, and your wife is a two-member family, may fall into that group as well. I, I don't know. So I'm looking at, as opposed to the, the family that Brian mentioned, where I got, you know, husband, wife, two to three kids or whatever, that are taking showers 30, 45 minutes or whatever, draining the hot water tank. So, I mean, I, I'm not sure who the, the, the target people are that would benefit from it. All I'm stating is, there are, there are somebody in the population that would benefit from that, as opposed to nobody benefiting from the other models.
Yeah. But it is the benefit of pretty much the sole first year.
Right. That's it. It's just the one year. As Brian said, I mean, the next year, everybody's catching up.
Yeah.
And it is a bad year.
No, that's true. It is. It, it might end up being the, the ameliorating factor for some, that they survived because they didn't get dinged by too big of a water bill, I suppose.
And I think that brings us to the point that we do not have to make this decision right away. I mean, as Councilman Kurtzwell pointed out, the economy, the new reports and things that are coming out, we, we know the direction, but we don't know how deep the direction's going to be. And I think getting the opportunity to take this in, maybe ask further questions, we can contact Brian, we can, you know, have another discussion at a later date. But I think over the next so many months, we should be talking about this and deciding which direction we want to go.
Yeah.
I agree. And I think it's good that, you know, giving the residents a chance to maybe even just watch this and hear it out, and hear Brian's presentation would be good for us to get feedback from as well.
So what I would like to do then, if, if that's the case, then we'll put, we'll put this on a few, future agenda for additional discussion, and I'll wait for some feedback or questions from council.
All right. Thank you very much, Brian. Great job on breaking that down. Did anyone, before we let Brian go, did anyone else have anything for Brian?
Good presentation, Brian.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Brian.
I actually, I thought that it was a very clever idea, that RTS, that's, I, I thought that was the thing that really made it possible to, to find some way to, to keep the funding in-house.
Thank you very much for the opportunity. Please let me know what I can do to help.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
Thanks for joining us.
So with that, we will move on to new business number one this evening, award of bid to install storm, storm sewer at DPW complex.
I know Mike Darga has been awaiting this discussion, waiting in the wings all day for this. Tonight, we're talking about the award of bid to install the storm sewer at the DPW complex to Stante Excavating Company. As part of our efforts to improve the working conditions and to preserve longevity of equipment at DPW, we've gone off for a bid for storm sewer improvements at DPW Yard, including with the bid as phase one, to put a detention basin in storm sewer, and at the yard to better facilitate the drainage and protect the equipment. Also included is phase two for concrete paving, which may be awarded at a later date through a change order. I've attached information from HRC, which includes their letter describing the project and the bid tabulation sheet. The possible course of action is approve or not approve the bid to Stante Excavation out of Wicksum to complete phase one, an amount not to exceed $176,985.10 from the capital improvement fund, 101451802500. Our engineer, Mike Darga from HRC, is here to answer any questions also.
Councilmember Kittle, I saw you over there. Go ahead.
Thank you. Okay, we've had conversations about the notion of whether the paving creates some, some optics problems. Here we are, we can't fix a road, but we're going to end up paving a lot for the DPW. Whether that, you know, whether that's something that we need to be concerned about or not, that's, that had been something that had been talked about. If that's the case, and we, we end up prolonging the paving portion, there's a, there's some serious, I mean, serious, it's $34,000 or something, in the event, event that we had Stante do the, the underground work, and then we're sitting on it, waiting to determine whether or not we want to pave. I don't know that you had suggested that it would be a change order. I don't know that that's ultimately going to swing not having a huge impact on what the, the change order cost would be, that would be different than having it rebid. So I was wondering if you could weigh in on that.
Are you looking at rebidding just the concrete portion, or are you looking at the whole project?
No, the concrete portion. We already have a bid for the excavation and land balancing and underground. We already have a bid for the excavation and land balancing and underground.
And rebid it, say, next summer?
Perhaps.
Um, I mean, you'd be looking at prices, I would say would definitely go up. Um, and then it would take time and money to rebid the project.
So how does that differ, though, from us just sitting on our hands, waiting because the optics are inappropriate for us to take that action?
Well, well, the change order, the way that is explained in the letter, the change order was more to work between the two fiscal years. Um, but since we've taken bids and this letter's written, um, the world's changed a lot. So, talking with the city manager, we were looking more of a change order would be a reduced scope, um, maybe partial paving, some new gravel. Um, so that, that's kind of what we would mean by change order at this point. It probably would be for the full concrete. Um, it'd probably be some amount that the city would be, um, would find acceptable.
Okay, so not that it's defined, uh, circumstances that we looked at initially. All right, that makes sense. All right, I can understand that.
Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, Mike, when we, I discussed this with the city manager, you know, I, I looked at the, uh, the bids there and I, I looked at it as, as opposed to a sit-down dinner. Uh, I looked at it as approaching it more as a buffet, that I would, uh, look at taking TLS for the first course and, uh, Merlot for the second, okay? And that's about a $34,000 difference than just taking STAN. What he pointed out is that mobilization is estimated, uh, in the first phase for all three of those companies. It is not included in the second. It is not called out specifically in the second, but it's already factored in, in that initial bid for that phase one. Is that correct?
That, correct.
Okay. So even if we rebid this thing in the, the following year, change the scope of the project for the, uh, the, the concrete work, uh, we're not going to have STAN coming back and saying, oh, now I've got to put a mobilization charge in there because we've already paid that up front. Is that correct?
If we award it to them now, um...
I mean, if we gave them the package right now and we changed the, uh, the scope on the thing, we say we want to scale it back a little bit, I wouldn't expect that we're going to get re, uh, a line charge in there for mobilization for that second phase because I, we've already paid for that upfront in the first phase.
Well, they bid the, they bid it based on, let's just say, mobilizing out there one time and having their subs out there one time. So now if we're going to split it up into two years, they would be entitled to a portion of remobilization. I would not expect it to be that full amount. Um, but, you know, it could be, you know, five, $8,000.
Okay, but again, they're, they're presupposing that once I start this project and I do the drainage work, I'm going to roll right into doing the paving work.
Correct.
Okay, so even if that, if that takes place the next year, we just change the amount of area that gets paved, all the rules are still the same. They've already got the mobilization costs there, right? If they roll right into paving a, a smaller area perhaps?
No, they would still be entitled to some sort of mobilization. Spreading it out over next year, I mean, if we do it like this fall or something.
Well, I'm, I'm not talking about with, with, you know, the downtime in between. I'm saying we're going to roll from one to the other, you know, when you get to the other, it's just going to be a smaller scope.
Sure, yes.
So it would be included under that situation, right?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
We believe if we bid these two separate, that we would have different bid amounts and who knows what they would be. As you can, as we can see with the bid amounts that came in, there are different amounts for mobilization, anything from 9,000 to 25,000. But if these were bid separately, and let's say we had talked to them at the beginning and said they could be nine months, 18 months apart or something like that, they would have mobilization included in one and the bids would probably come out completely different. But the way they're done, it was bid as being one project, and that's why someone feels that the economy's a scale, they can do it all for cheaper based upon doing both portions.
Right.
Um, doing this and awarding this now to Stante gives us the, I believe, the best option in starting this project, getting the storm sewer work done. And if things are not as bad as we think, then we can move forward with doing partial concrete, most of the concrete, no, not the concrete. I mean, we have the money budgeted within next year's budget, but based the way the economy is going, things are going to happen, this may be one of those projects that we decide that this is not a good idea, as Councilmember Kibble mentioned, for the optics, based upon all the things that are not being done on the rest of our roads, which we're going to have to have discussions on soon also, um, that we think that this would be the best and best option and best direction to go.
Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
I'd like to go ahead and make the motion to approve the award of the bid to, uh, STAN or Stante Excavating out of Wicksum to complete phase one of the bid at an amount not to exceed $176,985.10 from the capital improvement fund account number 101-451-802-500.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? City Clerk Deaton, would you please lead us in a roll call vote for this?
Sure. Read my paper. Um, Dill?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Kibble?
Yep.
Kurtschwell?
Yes.
Richards?
Yes.
Walton?
Yes.
Pelchat?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Motion passes. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Oh, is Mike still here? Quick question.
Yes.
Mike, is it possible to get an updated Gantt chart for those projects that, uh, HRC's currently working on, you know, the ground storage tank and, and the, uh, the others there that we've discussed previously when, uh, you and Jesse were before the council?
Sure, um, we're taking bids on the, what, for the tank project next week. Um, so once we get a contractor on board, um, we'll have a better...
Okay.
An update for you. So give me a, give me a few weeks.
Get us, get us a hard copy. That'd be great, Mike. Appreciate it.
All right.
Thank you.
We'll now move on to new business number two. Purchase and installation of a new Borger PL200 series primary sludge pump for sludge transfer process to include two additional pumps to be installed at a later date.
Our DPW director is going to be coming online, and this is for the purchase of the installation of the series primary sludge pump for the transfer process. And the wastewater treatment plant needs to replace the primary sludge transfer pump. The scheduled purchase for this year's budget, the wastewater plant is looking at options to change from a piston pump to a rotary lobe design. The change will make it much easier to maintain the pump and allow for better performance and efficiency. This expenditure can be purchased out of capital improvements account of the Water and Sewer, 592-5797. And our DPW director is here to answer any questions you may have regarding that. Somebody didn't like that, uh, the purchase, but, um...
Can you hear me? Hello?
Yep, we got you, Doug.
Sorry, guys, I had some audio issues there. I don't know where you guys are. I know you probably are talking about sludge pumps.
Yep. Paul and I just introduced the topic and he went over the explanation of the topic and then we moved over to you, so go ahead.
Okay, I am going to, there we go. I'm here. I've been here the whole time, honest. Had some technical difficulties right as I was coming up here. So before I, uh, launch into this, I'm not sure how much was discussed here because I lost audio for a minute there.
I, I gave the explanation of topic, so we can go right into materials and supporting documents for the bid.
Okay. Uh, essentially, um, I want to just kind of highlight what this is all about because there's some confusion, I'm sure there is. Before we get to the confusion, I just want everybody to understand that this, um, is actually a three-for-one pump scenario. Two of the three sales are offering that we get three pumps for the price of one. That will be for the installation of only one of those pumps. And then the other two at our discretion are when we take them. So just to kind of clear the water, that's what's happening with these. Um, there probably will be some questions. Um, I can go over anything and everything basically, so hopefully we can get to figure this out.
Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
Okay, Doug, you and I have talked about the, uh, the pumps that you're looking at. So you have some, uh, some pumps you want to replace. There's some benefits to selecting the vendor that you've currently identified. Uh, first one, like you've already mentioned, is that, uh, you know, they really want to work with us because they want to, uh, look at, uh, doing additional sales for other installations throughout the complex down the road. Uh, so they're offering three pumps basically for the cost of one. They're also including a set of replacement internals for that pump, uh, that will fit all three of those pumps. They're also including the specialized tools that are involved in overhauling that pump. And they're also granting you the ability to stage receipt of those pumps so that, you know, if we're going to do the first one right now, the next one, we're not going to be ready to replace for six months and maybe the third one in nine months, they're willing to stage the delivery to, to the city here, uh, at those intervals, which basically extends the warranty for those pumps. So the, uh, the warranty would start once delivery is, is, uh, received as opposed to purchasing all three right now and the warranty starts today, even though the pump wouldn't be installed for another six, nine months. Is that correct?
That is 100% correct, Councilmember Kennedy. That's one of the reasons why I was electing to go with Borger. The Borger, obviously, a little bit more upfront cost, I think it's four or $500 more. But if you break it down and actually look at the bid package, you'll see their per-pump cost is actually significantly less than even the Vogel saying. Uh, Vogel, and I'm very familiar with the rotary lobe pump, uh, the positive displacement pump, what they do. Um, I'm trying to, uh, implement this type, this type of technology here at the plant because what we're doing now is, is not effective as what these are, so.
Councilmember Kurtschwell, go ahead.
Uh, Doug, you sort of, uh, segwayed right into what I wanted to ask you about. Um, what, what actually is the disadvantage of going from a piston pump? Uh, why the piston pumps are not as, um, useful or wanted and why you're going to the rotary? I, I assume that one of them or two of the factors have to do with, with a maintenance issue. I assume that the pistons probably have a little bit more maintenance issue on them. And, and I'm not quite sure what the difference is in handling the flow rates between a, a piston pump and a rotary lobe design. Is there, is there a difference there?
Not really. The flow rates per se are, are really not an issue whatsoever. It's the design of the pump, personally, in my opinion. Um, we could put a Carter in here again, um, as the city has done many, many times over and over, these Carter pumps are 20, over $20,000 for a pump. Um, we could, you know, go, go ahead and do a plug and play, but the, if you, if you're there and you see it, you know why I think we need to get rid of the Carter pump. And that is because when they run, they make the loudest racket you've ever heard. There's a giant 10 to 12-inch plunger piston that works, that lets fluid in, pushes down, pushes it out, and it just keeps doing it. So by design, these pumps are basically, in my opinion, uh, they're to self-destruct at some point, the way that they work. That's just how that, that's how the mechanism is. That's how you're pumping the sludge. And so there's a much better methodology. Um, where I came from in Warren, they have already implemented the Vogel saying, uh, rotary lob, rotary lobe pumps, there's 12 of them there. Uh, they're much easier to work on, much more efficient, much more cost-effective to run. Um, they're basically a way better pump. That's kind of what it comes down to.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
I'd like to go ahead and make the motion to approve the purchase of, uh, the three Borger PL200 sludge transfer pumps for the spare set of replacement lobes for the installation for one pump for the wastewater treatment plant for $31,980 under line item 592.557-970.
I'll support.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion made by Councilmember Kennedy, supported by Councilmember Kibble, to approve the...
Mr. Mayor, do you want to do a roll call?
That'd be fine. Uh, we, um, City Attorney Hamame has suggested that we do that in any of these to, uh, make sure there's no confusion on who voted where. So, um, that would be great if, if, uh, City Clerk Deaton wouldn't mind leading that.
Uh, Richards?
Yeah.
Walton?
Yes.
Kurtschwell?
Yes.
Dill?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Kibble?
Yes.
Pelchat?
Yes. Motion passes. Thank you, Doug. Um, but you're not going anywhere. We'll move on to new business item number three. Purchase of new recirculation pump for the attic flow process at the WWTP that serves as a high-rate clarifier for territory treatment.
Uh, yes, so the wastewater treatment plant, uh, is currently in need of replacing a failed recirculation pump. Uh, this is a scheduled purchase for this year's budget. This expenditure can be purchased out of the account, um, 592-557-970. Uh, we'd like to waive the competitive bid process as this item is proprietary to Viola. Uh, the cost of this item with freight is $11,019.87. I've attached a quote for your review from Viola. Uh, this is, uh, basically Kruger. It's part of the active flow, which is a tertiary treatment here at the plant. It's, uh, better than a sand filter, but it's a finishing process here that, um, a pump, a research pump just failed on, so we had to order another one.
Councilmember Kibble, I, I believe I saw your hand there just...
Yes.
I, I just barely saw your index finger just for future reference.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I was just going to make the motion for the, uh, waiving, to waive the, uh, the bid.
I'll support.
I'm sorry, who, uh, who supported that?
Rose.
Thank you, man. Thank you, Councilmember Walton. All right, so we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the first part of this?
Yeah, I got a question.
Councilmember Richards, go ahead.
Okay, uh, I know we need this pump, but it says on the back of this bid sheet, if, if, if and available, okay? And I, I would hope that we wouldn't have to vote yes and, and not be able to get it for a year. Uh, how, how about this availability?
That has been addressed and, uh, it is available. We did call on it and it is going to be, it was one of those, we were kind of nervous too because of the whole pandemic, but it is, it is going to be something we'll have in six to eight weeks.
Okay, great, wonderful.
Great. Any further discussion on the first half of this? City Clerk Deaton, uh, will you lead a roll call for us?
Uh, Kurtschwell?
Yes.
Dill?
Yes.
Kibble?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Walton?
Yes.
Richards?
Yes.
Pelchat?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
Go ahead and make the motion to approve the, uh, purchase of the new, uh, uh, recirculation pump for the, uh, active flow system at the wastewater, uh, treatment plant for $11,019.87 under line item 592.557-970.
I'll support.
Any further discussion? City Clerk Deaton, would you again, please lead us in a roll call vote, please, and thank you.
Sure. Kibble?
Yes.
Kurtschwell?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Richards?
Yes.
Walton?
Yes.
Dill?
Yes.
Pelchat?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, with that, we will... With that, we will move on to a discussion of the proposed 2020-21 budget. City Manager Zelnick, I'll allow you to take the lead on this.
You've all received a copy of the updated sheets for the 2021 budget. Last week, you provided a copy of those particular sheets based upon the changes or corrections that were made since our budget workshop. At tonight's meeting in City Council, you have the opportunity to go over some of those changes or ask any additional questions that were or address some of the items that were made at the budget workshop. At our meeting, May 26, the proposed 2021 budget will be up for adoptions, or adoption, excuse me. There were several items that we made changes to. The Finance Administrator and I went over the minutes that were prepared by the City Clerk and discussed some of the things and put together the new numbers. Some of the things that we did address were changes in Act 51 revenues. Those were based upon new numbers that we received from the state of Michigan within the last couple of weeks. We updated the water and sewer revenues based upon the numbers that came in from Brian that were discussed based upon the water and sewer rate analysis. We did look at those particular changes being instituted beginning in the second quarter, not the first quarter. We can always adjust those numbers if we decide that we would move that to a different date or make that earlier. There was additional amounts made for under solid waste for the two shredding events that we had at the library. It was discussed at a prior meeting, but it was not addressed at our budget workshop. We added $4,500 within the DPW budget for the soil testing that was discussed. That was what we're looking at having done at 390 South Lafayette before that potential property could be sold or developed. There were numbers that were changed based upon the Cable Commission. I think I mentioned at the meeting on how they had given me additional numbers. There were some changes in marketing materials, so it actually lowered the total for overall budget. And also an additional $15,000 was added to the grading and seeding at the cemetery. Of course, we have to wait for those bids to come in before we know exactly what those dollar amounts are. We also had adjusted our revenue sharing, adjusted down. We will be awaiting a meeting that we have coming up this Friday. The Revenue Estimating Conference is going to be done on May 15. And we also have a webinar set up with the Department of Treasury on the 18th, where hopefully we'll get additional direction on what we feel that the revenue sharing numbers will drop for the upcoming year. And Patricia and I are both here tonight to answer any questions that you may have or if you want to bring up any other items that were not discussed.
Councilmember Kurtswell, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, my first concern is with the, and I think you're addressing it, it's with the intergovernmental revenues. I think the state is already projecting close to a $4 billion deficit. And the state has to have a balanced budget and they've already started layoffs as many cities already have in order to adjust for what people are beginning to think is going to be a severe haircut. I'm not quite sure I know what that means. But if you look back at shared revenues, state shared revenues back in 2008, '09, and '10, you know, they were dropped below $1 million. So that may be somewhat of the model that the state will use is the levels that they were giving back then to get through the financial crisis. I think this is going to be a little bit worse. So just want to say, keep your eye on those two columns because those are going to be real important. Next, on the general revenue on interest income, 664 item. I noticed that in the old budget or the prior budget with the paper in March, it did not have an interest income in there. And then this budget now has interest income of $20,500. What's the story on that? Did you just miss it?
If I may, Councilmember, I was in omission on the first round of budgets. I was still working on trying to project that number and I did not include anything. So that number is also, has been reworked a little bit based on anticipating that interest rates will most likely be lower going into the next first few months of the fiscal year.
What's your interest rate on that?
Well, this is for multiple accounts. So I would have to pull those numbers for you. I have them on a spreadsheet. I'm just, again, it was just an estimate based on looking at, you know, trying to project out a few months into the fiscal year.
As to police and fire, I mean, on police, I'm looking at line item 715-720 fringe benefits. That rocked down a little bit, roughly about $18,000. Any explanation for that?
That was a formula error that Chief Sylvick and I discovered where the there was longevity payments for employees that have reached 10 years plus anniversaries had been included in that line item and not put into 702 wages and salary where it should have been put.
Okay. Next, on major street operations. 202?
Yes.
I'm looking at the summary block. And when you look at the beginning fund balance for the proposed budget year 2021, it's showing total revenues of $3,401. Should that not be what your total revenues are?
That would be, again, that was a calculation that I should have changed. That took total revenues proposed for 2021 and included fund balance for a total revenue. So I will correct that for the next edition of budget revisions that go out. So that line will just show the revenues of what's projected at this point of $747,265.
Yeah, because when you take the revenues, the total revenues and subtract out the expenditures, you know, that's how you get that ending fund balance. That number, that 3.401, really, I just don't know how that got there.
Well, it was taking the total revenues with the beginning fund balance, which is how we do the year-end financial statements. I just subtract it for the budget. So when we do year-end financials, we include those together on that line item.
Okay.
For the budget, I should have pulled out the fund balance and I didn't, so I apologize for that.
No, that's okay. That's why we spend time on it. Then let's go to revenue 574. That's the state shared gas and weight tax. You actually are showing an increase in that column?
That is, we actually dropped that based on the new numbers. That would be the Act 51 dollars. And that was dropped 9% based on the new projections that we were given from the state a couple of weeks ago.
That's the dropped number?
Yes, correct.
Okay, because it may drop even more because that's a tax when you buy gas and nobody has put gas in their car for almost 90 days. So the state has not generated revenue at all. So that number may come down even a little bit more. Local streets, 203. What did I have here? Oh, you're showing, I'm looking at the revenue page?
Yes.
And the total revenues are 355, 368?
Same error as with major streets with the calculation of fund balance.
Okay, so total revenues, okay, you got that. And then haul on the Safe Routes to School, the $93,000. We talked about this a while ago. Have you had an opportunity to get in writing that Lion Township is on board in paying into this?
No, I have not. It's just been just verbal discussions that we had. And we put it in our budget to, you know, start the process, the discussions that we had with them. They are going to fully have to adopt their budget as well. Same with the schools also.
Okay, I'll call them tomorrow. I don't think it's in their budget. I don't think they're planning on funding it, but I don't want to say that without a confirmation call. Have you talked to the school?
I emailed the schools and not received an email back about moving forward with their portion. And just I had mentioned to you earlier, you know, it started discussions with the township and we have to start somewhere, putting ours in there, getting the other groups in there, and we can hopefully move forward. Because if we don't put ours in, nobody else is going to follow suit.
Okay, well, I was able to attend a conference call today with the school district with their finance committee. It's an open meeting. You could go on the website and you could tap into it. And they are looking at reductions approaching, approaching $3 million. I think it's highly unlikely that there is money in that budget for these sidewalks. But I'm going to get a confirmation call tomorrow on that. And here's the problem I have, is I have a problem with an item being in the budget that I'm going to potentially be asked to vote on that hasn't been vetted. You don't put items in a budget in anticipation of somebody else doing something. I would think that there would be some verification that Lion Township has said, yes, we are committed. Here's the email. And yes, the schools are committed and here's the email. Just this phone call, it's not standing up at all. So I've got an issue with that. That's $93,000 that can go someplace else.
None of them, well, it won't get spent on anything if the other jurisdictions don't participate. But I cannot get confirmation from any of them because they're not allowed to vote on this until they bring it to a general body. So no one can say, I can say all the other members of the board, I've done a round robin and they all say they're going to support it, but it's all going to come out until they actually vote on their budget.
That's not actually correct. People have draft budgets, just like we do. So if somebody wanted to see our draft budget, they could see our draft budget. They could see that we are proposing a line item of $93,000. That line item proposal is not in the budget for Lion Township. And I will learn tomorrow whether there is a proposed line item in the budget for the school district. So you can find that out. It's, the public has a right to know what's being proposed as an expenditure.
Absolutely. And I'm trying to show the commitment for the city of South Lyon to move this process forward. I cannot or we cannot get buying with the other entities unless we put it in our budget and our budget is going to be adopted within a month. And I don't know their exact dates for when they're going to be all adopting theirs. I don't have that written down, but we need to show the initiative that we're ready to do it. But if they won't approve it and they don't move forward, we don't start these discussions and start having meetings with a committee and we don't do it, our money or the $93,000 will never be allocated and it stays within our fund balance.
Okay, all right, I just want to make sure you understand. But people are starting to look at their budgets for cuts. That may be one of the reasons why it's not in their budgets. Because there are some serious budget cuts that are coming in that school district, serious. They appear, I was on the call. I participated. I asked them specifically about that line item. They will get back with me tomorrow. So people are talking, you just got to pick up the phone and ask them. But there are serious budget cuts that are coming. So I don't think it's the case that people don't want to participate. I think they are being fiscally savvy with saying the worst may be coming down the road and we need to look at where we are going to start making cuts. That was the discussion today. They haven't even adopted their budget yet and they're talking cuts.
All right, and this initiative was placed within the budget months ago before COVID-19 even started. So that's how it was just to get it started, that's correct.
I know, but people are beginning to respond. I mean, you don't wait until the midnight hour to decide, okay, now I think we need to make some cuts. Many cities that I've been talking to are
Let's worry about our budget.
No, we need, no, Glenn, that was inappropriate, please. Many cities that I have been excuse me, many cities that I have been in contact with are already planning. They're not waiting for the final budget approval. They are moving forward already knowing that there is going to be some serious cuts in their budget and they are saying to their governing bodies, if I need to cut, what is okay with you? Or do I just pull it from the general fund? These discussions are happening now before their budgets are even approved.
Absolutely.
That's all I'm saying, it's a planning tool.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Does anyone else have anything to add to that discussion? Councilmember Dill?
Just quickly, I think that, I don't know that Lion Township could do that right now for a couple of reasons. One, they're not meeting and two, I think they do their budget in December. I don't think they line up the same time as us.
I'll say something.
Councilmember Kurtswell, I'll come to you after Councilmember Richards. Go ahead, Councilmember Richards.
To refresh everybody's memory, years ago, I think it was under Mayor Wallace's administration back at that time, we contributed $150,000 to this Safe Routes to School. And it was spent and it was spent well. To this day, I don't think Marjorie Anne Street in Lion Township or Lion Township as a whole put up any money on that. And I know the school didn't. So I'm just saying, we don't need to feel guilty about this if we don't take the lead on this, that's all.
Thank you, Councilmember Richards. Councilmember Kurtswell, go ahead.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Two additional issues on the budget from the state side is that the state will not even know what revenue it is going to have, which puts us at a disadvantage until sometime after July 2nd or July, I mean, July 15. You got to remember, state income taxes were delayed from April to now July. So the state itself is not even going to know how bad it is until after we pass this budget. I mean, that is that. The second thing is that the state's budget runs from October to October. So anything on the state share program or Act 51, we are a little bit behind on that because we budgeted it assuming it's on our fiscal year, which is June to June, July whatever, but the state apportions that money October from October. We won't know anything about the state really until that, until those tax returns are due in July. That's huge, that's huge.
Councilmember Kenny, I see you over there, but I'm going to go over to Patricia first. Patricia, did you have something to add to that?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to make a comment to go along with Councilwoman's comments on the Act 51 dollars. I actually budget those based on the states because they give us three years worth of estimated revenues. So I take their information and make it work with our fiscal year. So they do operate on an October to September fiscal year, but I use the three years of data so that our budget should match to what they're giving us from July 1st to June 30th. I got, based on what we know.
Excellent.
Thank you, Patricia. Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
The city manager has previously stated that, you know, taking into consideration what Councilmember Kurtswell mentioned, July 1st, all the departments are not rushing out to spend the money they've been allocated. Okay, some of those purchases are going to be put on hold until we find out what some of the revenue is going to be so that, you know, we don't end up in the hole. And I guess, you know, he's already talked about that on several occasions. It just seems to have fallen on deaf ears perhaps.
Councilmember Kurtswell, go ahead.
Yes, you know, Mr. Kennedy, don't get inappropriate with people. Let's try to stay reasonable, professional. No, so I have not heard the city manager say that he was going to delay certain expenditures. I have not. I have not had that conversation with him. Nobody has expressed to me that they were going to delay the buying of the police car, that they were going to begin prioritizing expenses. Here's what the priority list is. Nobody has explained to me that that the priority will be keeping employees employed. I know Westland's starting to lay off employees. I would hope that we would keep employees. I don't know what the city manager's policy is on that. I don't know what the city manager's policy is with respect to how far he's willing to go into the general fund. I don't have those answers. I just don't have them. But I would hope that somebody is thinking about it. But there has not been a council discussion on that at all.
He's mentioned it previously, Maggie.
Well, I'll go back to the tapes.
Do that.
Yep.
All right. Does anyone have anything else to add to our 2020 2021 budget discussion this evening?
I will be bringing back some additional changes based upon some of the discussions tonight and based upon the meeting that we have with the Department of Treasury regarding the revenue sharing conference that they're having this Friday for when they do their projections. We will base our numbers based upon those projections that they give us. We do realize that those numbers can potentially change. Our numbers that we updated on Act 51 were numbers that we received from the state of Michigan based upon their updated projections based upon things that are going on. But most of it is based upon receipts that they've already had for for gas and what their projections are moving forward. And we will, and I want to make everybody aware that we will not be spending dollars just, I can't think of a good term, but without further scrutiny of each one of the departments, I've had discussions with them regarding this even at the end of the year. But right now, we are just in a position where there are so many things up in the air, and there are so many unknowns that are going on. We know there's going to be reductions, but we don't know how much it's going to be.
That's right.
And as just a budget or even a plan, we have money allocated, but we definitely do not have to spend that money for particular projects. We have money, you know, allocated to do these things. But everything still comes through City Council for approval. So I will continue to update you as I get additional information and make sure that everybody is fully informed as was discussed tonight.
Thank you, Paul. With that, we'll move on. I'm assuming we're all set with the budget at the top of the next paragraph. So we'll move on to the manager's report.
Just updating you, we're preparing for when the state is going to be releasing, and we're going to feel comfortable to open up our city offices. We'll be looking at, you know, doing postings, sending information to the public on safety measures here at City Hall, instituting, you know, reopening, ensure that the visitors and the staff members are safe. We're already discussing wording of signs and how we're going to convey some of these things to the public. I'll be updating you as we move forward with that. I want to update everybody that we are moving forward with the asbestos removal at the building that is in McCady Park that we own at the end of Washington Street, as well as at 318 West Lake. After that's taken care of, those buildings will in fact be demolished. We had discussed at our last meeting regarding the charter revision, and we should discuss moving forward how we want to look at looking at our charter, reviewing the charter about establishing a committee, whether we want staff members, council members, attorney, how we want to look at that, or if we just, you know, if people want to chime in, we can put it certainly on the agenda and talk about how we how we want to move forward. I want to also mention that the state did in fact extend the ability for our council and for our other meetings to be held virtually to June 30. And if we expect that we're going to move forward with that, we are looking at upgrading our system that we're using right now for our Zoom meetings to make them more conducive to how our meetings are held. Hopefully, by the next meeting, we'll have some of those parameters actually in place. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Does anyone have anything for Paul this evening?
Yeah.
Councilmember Richards, go ahead.
Paul, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Paul, I have some short questions here. This is past the first week of May, and do you foresee that we're going to reinstitute the citywide garage sales later in the year?
I, right now, I can't comment. I, based upon what's still going on, I think it'd be premature for us to even partially even set a date and get and put information out there. And then we may have to retract it at a later date, just as farmers market, just as other events, without other things in place. I think it's really difficult to say, yes, we're going to start this date, and then we may have to pull back, you know, two weeks later when we get additional information, or unfortunately, some other catastrophic things happen.
Okay, I understand. And I would probably go for the annual spring cleanup, which we've bypassed and probably won't have this year. But is there going to be a target date for opening up the cemetery for the garden planting?
We've been discussing that. I've been having conversations also with the group that's been maintaining that. But due to the restrictions based upon those members working out there, we've been trying to do just the essential work that's been out there. Our concern is the large gatherings that maybe that may take place out there. We're going to be, you know, moving this forward. We're luckily, well, unluckily, had cold weather where nobody's had the means at which to hurry up, get out there and start planning. Hopefully, by the first June, maybe we can start having those individuals go back out there. But it's it's an ever changing subject, ever changing scenarios. And we certainly don't, like I said, don't want a lot of people gathering out there and potentially spreading this as well.
I understand. Well, thank you. That's all.
Thank you, Councilmember Richards. Does anyone else have anything for Councilmember Kurtzwell? Go ahead.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Paul, a while ago, I gave you that statute on the capital improvement plan. Have you had an opportunity to look at it?
Yes, and I'm well aware of it. We're continually moving forward with the limited staff that we have of putting something like that together for the city.
Okay, so you're in agreement that the city's in violation without having that CIP in place?
I said it from day one that we need to have a capital improvement plan for the city, and I didn't really want to go into say it's a violation. But the statute does require that a city does have a capital improvement plan in place.
Well, I think it's important for people to understand that it's one thing to say, yeah, we'll get to it. We'll do a capital improvement plan. You know, that's just something that's on somebody's, you know, task list versus making it a priority because there is a statutory requirement to do it. So what it does is it changes the task from one priority level to another. So that's all I want to do is to make people aware that 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 we are not in compliance with the statute. And hopefully, do you have an idea when you think you'd have a draft of a capital improvement plan? Are you how that's going or?
I'm formulating components of it through Carol, who's working within our office. That was, you know, I think, you know, as the mayor had brought up regarding potentially bringing her on full time, I think bringing her on to start working on that more because she's been trying to work on DDA. She's been working on, you know, other things here at the office with the limited amount of time. But she's been taking initiative and is keep assembling more components. I believe it's going to be components that are going to be brought before council. Right now, it's very difficult because we not only have a regular workload of things that are taking place, but this is one more thing we want to have added on besides the COVID-19, besides obviously the budget which get adopted. You know, we have work. We're happy about that. We're just, we're moving forward. It's just too bad it wasn't initiated or it wasn't done the last five or 10 years. Even if it was just one portion that was done five or 10 years ago, and one new portion done every year, you know, we pretty much have it completed by now. So we're starting from square one.
Well, in all fairness to people that have been on council for a long time, I think that it may be that nobody ever told them that it was a statutory requirement. And so maybe people just thought, okay, we'll get to it. But but yeah, it's a statutory requirement. And if you just worked in components and got maybe two departments in by the end of the year, and then, you know, next year, January, February, March, you know, we'll probably be dealing with some level of COVID-19 next winter and back being quarantined for a little bit. Who knows? Who knows? But, you know, at least you're working towards it, and sooner rather than later would be better. And as to the, I don't know if you want comment now on the charter revisions, I don't think there's that many that need to be done. You're looking at one or two, maybe three. I mean, it's not that big a deal. I wouldn't sure spend a whole lot of time forming committees and things like that on it. I personally, I'd let your city attorney just draft up. We know what the issues are. Be done with it. Get it ready for the ballot in November. That's just me. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else have anything for city manager Zelnick this evening? All right, great. At this time, we'll open the floor for public comment. Please remember to state your name and address. Ms. King, go ahead. Oh, you're muted.
Sorry about that. I was off mute on my computer, but not on my phone. Good evening, council. I have a few comments I wanted to make. First, I wanted to thank Chief Sobek and his officers for the good work that they did as a resident. Oh, and I'm sorry, did I say 791 Westbrook? That might have been on mute, too. As a resident of Oak Creek Village, we appreciate the work that they did in catching those boys that were breaking into cars, not just here in our subdivision, but throughout the town. So thank you for that. If I'm able to, I'd like to comment on the the presentation that Brian from Plant Moran gave. It was discussed a little bit earlier that some of the people that will be benefiting, the only people that will be benefiting from the 10% rate, if that's what you what is voted on, would be the single or single people or couples, especially people in colonial acres. And I think we can all agree, they could they could benefit from not having a cost increase when it comes to their water bill. 18, I don't have the paperwork in front of me. I don't have the report that he that he presented. I believe it was 18% of a decrease in the first year. Seems like a lot, although I think that their rate should be held steady or reduced. Even though Brian said he didn't want to go back and redo it, I think looking at 15% or somewhere around there for the increase, not the 10%, not the 25, but 15, kind of a happy medium there, might be worth doing. And I also wanted to say thank you to everybody tonight, the council, but also City Hall. You guys are working under some real difficult conditions, and it can't be easy. So thanks for everything you guys are doing. And with regards to the survey you're doing, if anybody needs any help at City Hall, I'd be happy to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. King. Is there anyone else looking to speak for public comment this evening? All right. With that, we will move forward. Excuse me, my public comment timer is going off, and I don't know how to shut up. With that, we'll move to council comments. And Councilmember Walton, you're going to get us going tonight so you can get out of here. Oh, and you're muted as well.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a couple of things tonight. I want to remind everyone that tomorrow, the 127th wing of the Michigan Air National Guard will conduct flyovers over eight Michigan cities to show support to the frontline healthcare workers. Along with them will be the U.S. Navy's legendary Blue Angels. They are also planning flyover Detroit. The flyovers will begin around 11:30 a.m. and should last roughly about 21 minutes. So hopefully, everyone gets a moment to see that. You will have a little bit of jet noise, but hopefully, it's worth the view. The other thing I want to remind everyone is that Active Faith distributes food every Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday from 11 to 4:30. So if you need some extra assistance during this time, you can get over to Active Faith during 11 to 4:30, Monday, Wednesday, Thursday. And lastly, I want to note that the Marines plaque has been added to the Veterans Memorial up in McCady Park. It looks wonderful. And say thank you to the family of Gerald Barr for your donation, and also for lending us your family member for to keep us safe. So that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Walton. Councilmember Richards, why don't you go ahead and go next?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to just make a general comment to our city attorney, Lisa. If there's any legal way possible that we could get some questions on the August primary ballot to our citizens, without the, obviously, you can't pass around petitions in a time like that. If they would like to have a vote on several issues in the November election, which we other communities do, we certainly have at least five or six issues that I think, in my opinion, the public ought to vote on, and we can present this at a later time. But if there's any legal way possible for that to be accomplished, I think that would be wonderful. Moving on, at some time in the last two weeks, I've been in contact with one of the top officers of the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services. And I talked with her. I had letters communicating with her from 2017, and I got back with her. And she is more than willing to come to South Lyon at some future date when we resume meetings and give a presentation of the services that they provide and clear up the questions that many people have, especially our senior community. Okay, moving on. Pleased to announce that the Rose Escavating Company is back to work this week. And that's wonderful. They're a very important force in our town. Alexander's Restaurant is moving along with its improvements, and I'm glad to see it. Next, I hope some of the people that received stimulus checks either in the last week or so or in the future will think about it and set some of the money aside that they receive for items that they never would ordinarily spend money on that could be set to benefit other people and our community in various ways. And I'm happy to announce that I'm very happy to see that our legal expenses have on the billing have gone down over the last two meetings or two or three meetings. And I don't mean just a little bit. They've gone down significantly. And I think we could all be very happy about that. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Richards. Councilmember Kennedy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight, I just want to remind everyone of the importance of social distancing and of wearing a mask where required to inhibit the spread of the virus. Our nine county area in the southeast corner of the state currently accounts for about 77% of the recorded cases of COVID-19 and 89% of the reported deaths. As you know, the rate of infection has slowed, and we are flattening the curve according to the medical experts. That does not mean the virus has gone away. It merely means the incidence of infection is within a range that doesn't outstrip the capacity of the hospitals and medical centers to deal with it. We still have a ways to go in dealing with it. On another note, just a reminder to complete your 2020 census, we are currently at a response rate of 78.3%. In the 2010 census, we had an overall response rate of 86%. We still have a large number of residents to be counted. Under the current situation, we can't rely on canvassers from the Census Bureau to visit the houses of those who do not reply to get their information. As such, it's going to be essential that each of us take the responsibility for being counted in the census and complete your census questionnaire. Either visit the website at my2020census.gov or call 844-468-2020 to do your part. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Kennedy, and thank you again for reminding our folks at home to participate in the census. That's very important. Councilmember Kurtzwell?
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. I have been working with businesses all over the state. Some of them are in the Midwest regarding SBA section money, also with some farmers with some aid that is coming out of Washington. And I've had an opportunity to speak with a lot of businesses. And this includes businesses that are here in our own state and even in our own city. And no doubt that every day that our economy is not open is another day is another day that a business will close its doors for good. That is happening, that will happen, and that will continue to happen. We need to understand that families are suffering, a loss of income, and that loss of income translates to a loss of food, a loss of healthcare, and opportunities for a good and a decent life. We need to get back to work. We need to get people back in their jobs. There is also on top of COVID-19, what they call despair deaths. Despair deaths are those where people die from alcohol addiction and suicide. But we need to walk that fine line, and we need to understand that this has been horrible. We need to understand it, and unfortunately, we need to learn to live with it. We need to keep up our social distancing. We need to wear our masks, wash our hands, and be smart about who we hang out with and who our social contacts are. We also need, and the most important thing I want to get across tonight, my council comment is that I have been assisting businesses with respect to their protocols in terms of how they're going to reopen. So as we go back to work and as our businesses reopen, I am asking respectfully that people in the community respect the protocols that businesses are putting in to protect not only their workers, but to protect you. Please don't give these businesses a hard time like what I have seen in the grocery store in the past week. It's been horrible. These businesses have gone through enough. They want to open, but they need to open with certain protocols. It may not be convenient for you right now, but for these businesses, they need that job, they need that income, and they need to feed their families. Please, please be respectful of the protocols that are going to be instituted in the businesses, no matter where you go. Do not give these businesses a hard time. Stay home, stay home if you can't control yourself. But please, please, give these businesses a chance. Get in, respect their protocols. Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Kurzweil. Councilmember Dilg?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I would like to agree with, uh, with, uh, Maggie about the, uh, making sure that you support businesses, but also the way that they need to open so that we can get back to work. I appreciate that message, uh, very much because when we start opening up, um, if people fight it, we're just going to have to close down again. It's going to be devastating. Um, on that note, um, I'm just hoping, I know that I'm a constant drumbeat about supporting our local businesses, but they're really, really, really being creative on how they're doing things. A lot of them are even having, um, show, video showings where you can just call in and they'll walk you around their store. Um, they have, uh, you know, they just are doing some very creative things to, to, um, to keep their, you know, keep money flowing. So whatever you can do to support the businesses, I'd really appreciate. And that would include, um, this crowdfunding that you can find on the DDA's Facebook page. You can find it on my council page. Um, and some other, there are several other people have posted it as well. But, you know, we, we go to these businesses constantly to get money to fund our teams and our organizations and our fundraisers and the city. And now it's really, they need us. And so I really would appreciate it if people would go on there, even if you can give $10 to it. Um, those, that money's going to be matched, so that's a really important thing, um, for our businesses. Um, I just wanted to also say that I hope everybody had a happy Mother's Day. I saw a lot of really creative celebrations. I really appreciate how everybody is trying to stay within the boundaries of what they can do, but still, um, seeing each other. And, um, Rose is gone, but I, I'm going to call her to mention that um, I'd love to support this Memorial Day thing, and I think there's some cool things we could do. Um, we could even have kids do sidewalk chalk contests because I've seen some really cool things there, or door decorating contest, something that we can get everybody engaged in for Memorial Day, I think would be really great. So that's all I had tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Dilg. Councilmember Kibble?
Uh, yeah, yeah, that project, Support Downtown South Lion, I think that, that's really a, a cool thing. Just so anybody that isn't aware, patronicity.com. So as it stands right now, the last time I looked, it was 33 people had, uh, made a donation, and there's 13 days left. And as, um, Lisa had suggested, there's match money from the county that we should be really capitalizing on. Um, uh, so I'm hoping we can maximize that $4,000 limit. The, um, the other aspect of this was we've got an awful lot of businesses that aren't in the downtown. I would love us to try to put our heads together and see if there's some way that we certainly wouldn't get match money, certain, or at least by the county. But, um, perhaps there's some way we can try to help reach out to people that have businesses in town, need a little assistance, and, um, you know, we could try to pull together some dough to split up and, um, try to help them sustain their business. So, um, well, that, that's pretty much all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Kibble. Um, I will try and keep this brief as well, but I do got a couple of important things that I want to go through. Uh, first things first, um, the VFW, the American Legion, along with Dana Johnston and the Cable Commission and our surrounding communities are currently working on alternative ways to honor our local veterans. If you know of a local veteran or family of a local veteran that has passed in the past year, please reach out to Dana Johnston or Phillips Funeral Home uh, so they can gather their information and, and, uh, honor these folks on Memorial Day. Uh, the deadline, unfortunately for this information, is going to be this Friday. We will be hitting social media up to remind folks, but, uh, unfortunately, because of the way we got to do everything and shoot everything, we need this information a little bit earlier than we normally would for the parade. So, um, there's that. Along with, I have been getting, uh, some very concerned emails and phone calls from small businesses in the area, uh, not just inside the city, but um, our surrounding area in concerns with finding PPE, uh, not just to hit the minimal to reopen, but to protect their employees. Um, I've reached out to several, uh, avenues in the area. Uh, Phil Wiper, our Oakland County Commissioner, uh, has gotten back to me and says the county is working on signage posters and guidance for PPE uh, for those businesses that are in the startup list, and it is coming. So, um, as soon as we start getting that here, we will get that information out to you as soon as possible as well. As I wrap this up tonight, you can't thank our first responders and our essential workforce here in the community uh, that is, uh, continuing, uh, to shoulder the load um, in keeping operations and keeping people safe. So thank you to all of you each and every day. Uh, and with that, we will wrap up a marathon meeting this, this afternoon and evening. So, Councilmember Kurzweil, go ahead.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. I move to adjourn.
Second.
Great meeting all. Have a great night.
Thank you, Dan. Great meeting. Amber? Amber, can you hear me? Can you hear me, Amber?
I think she might have laughed. So, yes, I can hear you.
Can you hear me, Amber?
Yeah.
You are, you want to see if you can get and, uh, with Lisa, get with Lisa Dilch and see if you can help on that survey. Because you did a good job on, on the business one for, for the city.
Oh, thank you.
You know, I mean-
Yeah, whoever's working on it, if they need help.
Well, reach out. Ask, ask Lisa Dilch. You know, ask her. I mean, you did, you did a good job on, on the other one. You know, I mean, I looked at stat, you know, data and all that kind of stuff all the time, all the time. Every survey's different. Every result is different. Some have good results, some, you know, whatever, but you've got a good talent. And, and thank you for volunteering. I wanted to say that.
Oh, sure. Thank you. Thanks for saying so. Have a great night.
Stay safe.